Oh, thanks Jackie. Thanks. Yeah, I've been doing that for the Ukraine. He's doing it for the Ukraine now. Did you good?
But I clicked on it to see.
I was uh, talking to these people who they did are looking for volunteers to fly stuff over there. C one thirty stuff. He's good. Yeah, if they're looking for like C one thirty, C one thirty people. Well, I'm not a pilot, no, but I can move aircraft, let's put it that way. Uh, especially in zones like that.
Yeah.
But that would be pretty cool to do. My, my, I told my wife, I thought she said, what are you nuts? She says, you know what? You did that all over the world. Why not? I did. I heard you. I hear you got it on audio now. It's amazing. I bet. Is he the narrator? Oh wow. Okay, I'm familiar with it. Boehner's got some good insights in it. I just finished one on the US, I just finished one on the USSR, Concise History. And I just finished that. Yeah. And now, now I got Gorbachev, I'm on that. Anyway, we'll see what happens with that Jackie. We'll see what happens with that. Yeah.
Yes. I, I just texted him to see if he can hear us. So I'll have him.
Remember to speak into them.
I can hear you guys.
And we hear you Walter, Councilman. So good.
I see the chief. There he is.
Okay, so everyone's here. Call the roll please.
Mayor Mitchell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bravo.
Here.
Councilman Best.
Present.
Councilman Fajet.
Here.
Councilman Vasquez.
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Thank you. Let's all stand please for the invocation by Councilman Fajet.
It'll be presented by Councilman Best this evening.
Oh, okay.
Before we start, I, I'd just like to mention those of you that may know or may not. Eric Elsa has been hospitalized and is in fair condition at the moment, but please remember him in your prayers. Saint Michael, the Archangel, defend us in battle. Be our defense against the wickedness and snares of the devil. Hail holy, hail holy king. By the power of Almighty God, may you cast into hell Satan and all evil spirits, which crowd for the world sick and the ruin of souls.
Please all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to have the Girl Scouts lead us. Girls, if you would step forward, please. Place the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Scouts. Hey, I want to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight of March 12th. It's great to see so many people here with us. We're going to start with the awards and presentations section, and if it's okay with the council. I was going to move sec, agenda items C and D after A to kind of, I know the room's a little crowded and that way it'll provide a little more room for anyone that's waiting to get in. Is that all right? Okay, all right. So we'll start with awards and presentations, agenda item I, excuse me, A. Presentation of Certificate of Appreciation Award to the Miami Springs Lions Club for 85 years of service. This is incredible. And this is a club, I just want to say that this is a club that the pandemic struck everyone hard. You know, it struck families hard, businesses hard, civic clubs especially hard. And this is a club, the Miami Springs Lions Club is a club that instead of letting the pandemic slow them down or stall their efforts, they just found new opportunities to serve by providing the COVID testing consistent every single week for the past two years. That we've had COVID testing available at their clubhouse, not just for our community, not just for our residents, but for anyone who wants to come by. I know it's been talked about throughout South Florida, that it's one of the places where you can quickly get in and out, no lines. And this is something that we didn't ask the Lions Club to do. They're the ones that saw the need and came up with a way to do it, not just one time, but every single week for the past two year. We're very, very appreciative of that. And also the food distribution drives. The Lions Club during this whole COVID pandemic, a lot of communities, cities have been organizing food drives. And this club again stepped up and said, we can do more than just an occasional food drive that the the government is providing or the cities are providing, and they provide their own once a month. Is that correct? Once a month is, is a food drive at the Lions Club. If you've ever been through Miami Springs on, I think it's usually on Friday mornings when they're being provided, you see a long line of, of people who depend on these food drives. Lining up, waiting to be there as soon as they open. These are things. And, and in addition to this, they're still kept up with every single other service project that they do for our community. They haven't let up on that. And I think the most, what I find the most touching about the Lions Club is that any member that you run into always has a smile on their face. They, I have never run into a Lions Club member that doesn't smile while they listen to an issue, while they listen to a concern, or while they say, you know, what they're doing, what their project involves. So for all of those reasons, we're very, very grateful for 85 years of service, which is no small feat. And because of that, we had, I know they had, the Lions Club had the celebration, the anniversary, happy birthday party on Saturday was a lovely, lovely event at the Miami Springs Country Club. And we presented, I was honored to be invited. And I presented a proclamation, which I'm going to read out from the city of Miami Springs. And we also have tonight a certificate of appreciation for the Miami Springs Lions Club. But before we do that, I wanted to ask their club president, Elizabeth Fisher, to come up and tell us a little bit. I just kind of quickly went over some of your accomplishments, but I know there's so much more and, and I want to encourage anyone who wants to be a member of the Lions Club. This is a club that has their arms open, welcoming and inviting for anyone who wants to serve.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Mitchell, council and members that are here tonight. We have about 20 members of our Lions Club that are here. We currently have 76 members of the Miami Springs, Miami Springs Lions Club and the food distributions, the COVID. We've collected over 1,000 pounds of recycled plastic for some park benches that are now within the city, one across from Fair Havens and another one that's to come in the near future. We do eyeglass recycling, about 50,000 this past year, every Tuesday night. We recycle and clean eyeglasses that are collected from Sebastian to the Keys. So a couple of thousand every Tuesday night, six o'clock to eight o'clock. Come by and help us recycle eyeglasses and, and clean and sort. Lots of other different projects from crocheting, caps for children who have pediatric cancer going to the hospital, over 150 of those children's toys, gifts. We, this amazing club spent the entire night cooking meals for first responders at Surfside. That served one morning of breakfast at 6:00 AM, all night and the wee hours of the morning to cook a homemade eggs, bacon, French toast, breakfast, and so many other things. What am I missing guys? What other? It just, it doesn't stop. We've been very busy. So thank you. Back to school, we provide backpacks for children, back to school time, veterans dinner, wonderful golf tournament. All go to Lions charities, disaster response. We sponsored $1,000, $5,000 to the Special Olympics this year for the games that will be held in Florida and hosted by Lions. Lots of other things. Yes, we provide holiday meals to, to those that have been shut in, meals with our hunger, just hunger relief committee. Quarterly as well, 100 meals go out there. We'll be doing a waterway cleanup in April. So come look at our Lions Club website or city publicity for that. We'll be doing a cleanup there and.
Elizabeth, you keep looking back there, we're gonna be here all night.
No, I stopped right there.
That's okay.
All, all the things that this club has done is just absolutely amazing. Absolutely amazing.
I don't think you mentioned the A to Ukraine.
Yes, we did some packing for Ukraine as well, for disaster relief boxes that went there. We had a team that went there already over there. They went that, that weekend we packed. Yes.
And I think what, what is most impressive about the Lions Club, or one of the things, because there's so many things that are so impressive, is that they don't wait around to find out what need there is or to see if someone's asking for this help. They just magically realize that there's a need for something and they pop up and they fill it. So, and with so many things and the, the breakfast that you're providing at Surfside and the relief funds, but also with our city of partnering with us to provide the services during COVID. It's been extraordinary how much during this very difficult time, our city has been able to refer when we get calls in, you know, where people can get COVID testing, when there's food distributions, to have that ability. The partnering that you've done for our community with, with our city and for our residents and for all of South Florida has been remarkable. And 85 years and also, as I know nationwide, a lot of civic clubs are struggling to maintain their members. You have 75 and
72, 3, 4, 76.
And you continue to add new members, because I know on Saturday night you were inducting new members. So that in itself is, is quite an accomplishment. So thank you so much for all the Lions for your civic service. And, and I know I recognize so many of you. I mean, we know so many of you personally, because you're our friends and neighbors. But for a lot of you, this is only one small portion of everything else you do for the community. Because I know many of you are involved in several other clubs and organizations and, and projects. So it's, it's really what provides the, the strength, the support and the the best makes our community the best of any other community, I think in South Florida. I don't think we find that anywhere else. So 85 years, this is amazing. Happy birthday. I'm going to read the proclamation. And then I'd like to ask all of the Lions Club members to come to the front and we'll take a photo with the council. Okay, a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Miami Springs. Whereas it is recognized that the Lions Club International Association is the world's largest service club organization with 1.4 million men and women in approximately 48,000 clubs located in 200 countries and geographic areas. And whereas regardless of language, of the language that members speak, religion that they practice, or the politics they support, all Lions Club members have one common bond, helping people in need. And whereas the Miami Springs Lions Club was founded on March 31st, 1937 and is centrally located at 301 Swallow Drive on the Miami River in the heart of the city of Miami Springs and the heart of Miami Dade County. Whereas since its establishment, the club has always lived up to the Lions motto of leadership, experience, opportunity. As the club's members are committed to community support, eyesight health, disaster relief, healthy lifestyle education, established funding support for childhood cancer and rehabilitation. And whereas the Miami Springs Lions Club is a highly respected member of the Lions International, whose members have organized and participated in a vast variety of projects important to this community, such as their eyeglass recycling program, food distribution drives, and administering daily COVID-19 testing for the community. And whereas the Miami Springs Lions Club will be celebrating their 85th anniversary of service to the community on Saturday, March 12th, 2022. Now therefore, in Miami Springs and in observance thereof, I, Maria Mitchell, Mayor of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, call upon all the citizens of Miami Springs to join me in acknowledging this special occasion and do hereby proclaim March 12th, 2022 as Miami Springs Lions Club Day. And we also have the certificate of appreciation presented to the Miami Springs Lions Club in recognition of 85 years of dedicated public service to the city of Miami Springs and to its residents. The Miami Springs Lions Club supports global causes through a variety of projects that help the local, local communities needs. Presented this 14th day of March, 2022.
Is there anyone else from the Lions Club that wanted to say a few words? Welcome to, this is very special, 85 years. Mayor. Mayor.
She's being shy. Squeeze in. Again, a little more. Okay, on the count of, on the count of three, I'd like everyone to give a shout out, happy birthday Lions. One, two, three. Happy birthday Lions.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Are you okay? Keep those smiles on those faces.
Well, I'm here. Okay, so our next presentation, and thank you again Lions, for every single day of those 85 years of service that you and the people before you have done for our community. So our next agenda item is a presentation by the Girl Scout Troop 2564 by leader Connie Rodriguez regarding cookie sales. It's still cookie, Girl Scout cookies. It's over? Oh, okay, okay. So come on up and Scouts, come on up.
Wait till next year.
Would the council come up to, to join us? Okay.
So, good evening. So on behalf of Girl Scout Troop 2564, if you live in this community, you might recognize some of these faces when you went to Mylums. You guys know what I'm talking about? So we just wanted to thank the community for always supporting our girls and their goals. And this year COVID did hit us and impact us in a different way, because half of the girls started. Actually, they had COVID. So we started the season with a big challenge, but we discovered that we are better than that, right? So we were able to reach our goals and exceed them. So this is something unique for us. We're actually asking the coun, the council in the city of Miami Springs to recognize our Girl Scouts for all the wonderful things that they've done. And I'm so proud of everything that they have done. You know, we always go above and beyond what we can. I think two things, if you ask the girls what they like to do, one is camping, which is always fun. And also serving our community. And we've done that and then some. So we didn't let the pandemic hold us back. It actually propelled us forward. So we're very appreciative of that. So no further ado, I'd like to just hand these awards out. You guys excited to see how much they sold? You're gonna be amazed. We also brought some donated cookies. So believe it or not, we actually raised over 12,000 boxes as a council for donations. And our troop also, we usually are in the top five with that as well. So we do really well in our little community. So we're proud of the girls. So that's what I wanted to share. So I'm gonna give you.
Hold this for you so you can. Okay, Councilman. And I just want to say, for those of you that may not know, this Girl Scout troop last year during the pandemic, when we couldn't have the Memorial Day celebration or some of the, not Memorial Day, excuse me, the Veterans Day celebration or some of our vets couldn't attend because of COVID. This Girl Scout troop on their own decided to visit every single veteran's house in Miami Springs and place a flag in their yard, which is just, again, very appreciated. And nothing that was asked of them, they themselves, you know, thought of a way to up their service during the pandemic when everyone else was, you know, slowing it down. So thank you so much. I know that that was greatly, it was, I was so touched by that. What a, a beautiful project. Okay, so Allison Fink, congratulations, sold 264 boxes? Whoa. Oh my goodness, Allison. You didn't sell them all to your parents, right? You sold them to, okay. Okay, Bella Rodriguez sold 704 boxes. Oh my goodness, Bella. Okay, M. Oh, she gets the bronze. Okay, wonderful. And now we have Emily Baez. She's, okay. Well, she sold 44 boxes. So that's wonderful. Isabel Azar. Okay, well Isabel sold 174 boxes. That's a lot of cookies in Miami Springs. Is this correct? Isabel Benitez. Okay, do you know how many Isabel sold? I'm not, you don't say. Do y'all think it's over 500? Over 1,000? 1398 boxes. 1,398 boxes Isabel. Congratulations. That's a lot of boxes of cookies. No. I'm in awe. Having sold Girl Scout cookies myself when I was a child and having helped my daughter sell them, what, I mean, you have no idea what these numbers are. If we sold 100, we thought we were like, wow, we sold so many. Connie, and I think it's important to say that the, the proceeds from the Girl Scout cookies don't just go to your troop. They actually go to Girl Scouts organization to help a lot of Girl Scout troops that don't have the ability to have the resources of, you know, parents that are involved and, right? Okay, so now we have Maria Lombardi, who sold 2, 2,134 boxes. Maria. That's pretty phenomenal. Congratulations, girls, and thank you for your service as Scouts for our community. And I, I just wanted to say one more thing. Having been a Girl Scout when I was growing up in, in New Orleans, my mother wasn't able, she worked and she wasn't able to participate. I want to thank the moms and the parents that do the Girl Scouts. You touch so many lives by making this activity available to them. I know how, how difficult it is, you know, with the projects and everything that you have, most of you I'm sure work and everything else, but I just want to tell you as someone who benefited from the love and dedication of other moms being Girl Scout leaders, thank you so much.
All right, don't go away. So girls. So we brought you guys some cookies too. So on behalf of our troop, thank you so much.
Never say no to Girl Scout cookies.
Thank you. So much. Oh my goodness. Thank you. Oh yeah. One second.
Oh, thank you.
Let me go over here.
Thank you. Thank you Scouts so much. Oh. I don't think you're gonna find anyone who's gonna turn you down for that.
That's amazing.
Okay, so the next agenda item is recognition of the Aquatic Center lifeguards for the work they do to keep our swimmers safe. And before we go into that, I'd like to ask Rhonda Herbster, if she would like to come up and just describe, I know you had reached out to me about a week ago, being at the pool, just here at the podium, if you want to just kind of, if you'd like to describe what you saw.
My name is Rhonda, well, it's really Rhonda Ferrari Calvert. I had the name changed. But anyways, I've been to the pool a million times with my children and my grandchildren. And the kids were out there playing and having a wonderful time. And I'm just sitting in the lounge chair and I'm watching.
Rhonda, can you talk, speak into the micro, or pick up the other one, the other microphone? Is it there?
Oh, it's here.
Okay, well, maybe just speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
Well, I was watching as the lifeguard was standing on the other side and he just dove right on in and pulled a little girl out of the water. And with that, I was like, my breath was taken away. I've never really seen that at the pool. I've always seen the kids swimming and playing and having fun and they're doing their jobs and everything. And I got up and I walked over to this young man. And I said, with your keen eye and swift, oh, first I said, you don't need to know me. You don't know me and you don't need to know me. I said, through your keen eye and swift action, you probably saved that little girl's life, that child's life. And he responded by saying, it's my job. I was so impressed. And I called Maria and I said, I just was in awe because they're trained, these kids, young adults are trained to watch our precious children and our moms and dads and grandmas. And it happened. And I just felt that these wonderful lifeguards should be thanked for what they do, is what I did. So anyways.
Thank you, Rhonda, for letting us know. It's so good to hear. And I think what happened after Rhonda had told me that, I called our city manager and I said, you know, this happened, we need to commend this lifeguard. And I found out this is something that happens very, very commonly at the pool that they're on lookout and they're responding to. So we wanted to commend all of our lifeguards. And especially right now, I think it's really fitting as we're starting spring break and our pools are gonna be very used. These young men and women are, have such a degree of responsibility on their shoulders. And they do this every day and they make sure that the pool is just a safe and fun place for us to visit and for our kids to be at. So we want to commend them. Omar, do you want to come up and say a few words? Omar is our recreation director.
So I'll be brief. The reality is that, yes, our aquatics team is under a lot of stress at the Aquatic Center. The reality is that it's a job that's life safety. You are a lifeguard, it's, you have people's lives in your hands. And they understand that urgency. But that, that comes from the leadership from the top, 100%. And James Dean, our aquatic supervisor, and Kevin Freya, who's the assistant there at the Aquatic Center. And they've done an amazing job of not only training our staff, but also continuous training throughout the year and continuous reminders of the importance of what their job is. With that said, our staff is amazing. Their kids mostly right here from Miami Springs that have gone to the rec center since they were kids. A lot of them, I've known them now since almost 10 years that I've been here 12 years or so. And it's a blessing to have them work for us and have them grow in this environment and continue to provide a services community that's like no other. So I'm very proud of them. To be honest, you, I sleep very easy at night because of the staff we have at the Aquatic Center. Injuries at the rec center can be sprained ankle, they stubbed their fingers, but we move on. But at the Aquatic Center, they understand that there is life or death. And I'm very proud of them and our management staff that's there. And I want to applaud them for everything they've done and for them to have a great summer. And it's amazing what they do there. You guys don't know until you see it like Rhonda did. And then you realize the importance of these kids and what our staff does on a day-to-day basis in the Aquatic Center. So, thank you very much.
Omar, could you, I know there's some of them are here. Could you ask them to come up and you introduce them?
You guys want to come up?
Yeah.
Do you want to say some words?
Yes, we'd love to hear you.
Not much of a talker. Um, so yeah, it's like Omar said, it's a bunch of staff that we've just kind of grown through the years. They're very cohesive. We are in the, in the program of prevention rather than trying to save. We don't want to pull somebody out and have to do CPR or anything like that. So we drill it pretty regularly that we're trying to prevent something from happening. And as Rhonda mentioned, it is something we do on a regular basis, pulling somebody out if we feel that they're a weak swimmer. And we have different things that we can implement, like life jackets to try to help out if we notice there's weak swimmers as well. But this is only a sample of the staff I have. The others are still over there.
How many do we have in total, James? Let them know.
I think right now I have about 23, counting the cashiers.
It's wonderful. Thank you. Take one, one moment, let's take a photo with the council. Okay, so we're gonna move now to item 4B and it's a presentation by Councilwoman Ayala from the town of Medley on Health Occupation Students of America Club. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Liza Ayala and I proudly serve at the town of Medley. In our last monthly meeting, I presented the following item and I put this in your packets. Request by Councilwoman Ayala for discussion and action regarding sponsorship of town of Medley resident to attend HOSA Occupation Students of America State Competition. And with unanimous support, the town of Medley donated $1,000 to Miami Springs Senior High to support the students that will be attending this competition in April. Tonight, I humbly ask for the support as four of the 14 students that will be attending are Miami Springs residents. And with me, I have Ms. Icaza, who leads this wonderful club.
Hello, being mayor and good evening to the council. My name is Ms. Icaza. I'm the high school teacher at Miami Springs Senior High School for about 22 years now. We all especially see. We come before you, council, to, and mayor, to ask for the assistance of our community and sponsoring our students to the HOSA State Conference Competition from April the 9th through April the 12th. Our school has kindly, our principal that is, assisted us with the registration of our students. But the hotel accommodations can become very costly for the parents. We now can only put two students in a room because of COVID restrictions. They only allow two students per room. Normally, we have had always four students, so we can divide the cost of the room and the parents don't have to pay as much. So because of some of the restrictions that we have in terms of room accommodations, we have to only put two kids per room. So right now, we're in the midst of trying to fundraise to help the parents and make the cost for the parents a little bit more reasonable, I suppose, for the students. And that also includes food and kindly, the transportation, at least, will be paid by our school district. So our, our club, basically, it's a medical club. It's, provides leadership skills to our students. They learn how to present before an audience. They do presentations in the school as well as in the community for those areas that allow us, you know, because of COVID restrictions, we're not allowed at the present time in many places, but we normally do presentations in the community that are healthcare related. We've also participated in events in the community when Ms. Doyle has hosted some events in the community, whether it's a walk or other clubs in our school. And our students also participate in that or they set up a table of awareness on any healthcare topic that is of their interest. So right now, we have these students, as you see here, they are, have a portfolio presented. They can also show you some of their portfolio. We have students competing in the medical photography category, health education, extemporaneous writing, and of course, all of that, I guess, involves money. And I'm here to ask for the assistance of our community, whatever is possible. And that's it. If anyone wants other information, they can always ask me. So.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you so much. We will, we can't address it now, but we will consider it. And we really appreciate it. And thank you for going into healthcare, health services. I think the pandemic has shown us all, we all knew it was a very important career before that, a very noble one. And with, after the pandemic, or during the pandemic that we're still in, we've all realized how critical having more and more people select this as a career benefits our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Erica is the.
They're here.
Okay.
It's item G.
Okay, so, um, let's do item G also, which is the lobby artist of the month. It's Miami Springs Senior High School. Art students displaying their watercolor artwork down in our lobby. And is the, the teacher, the art teacher? Come on up, come on up.
Thank you again for having us.
Thank you for, for beautifying our city hall, our lobby with your talented work.
So these are the students that participated with the watercolor exhibition. One of the unique features of the show, the smaller pieces. My students were selected to do the centerpieces for the palette member breakfast at the Coconut Grove Arts Festival. So those work were, those pieces were all on display, 60 of them, and actually, half of them sold. So 60 of them were out during the weekend. And so some of the students pitched in and actually made more work for the lobby, for the kids to share with you all. And we thank you for a wonderful venue to put my students on display.
Extremely talented.
And then this is our new assistant principal, Dr. Hernandez.
Tino, do you want to say anything? Good.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank Mayor and City Council, Ms. Gonzalez and everyone here for allowing our students to go ahead and present their artwork. I have to tell you that I was privileged to attend the, the event over at the Coconut Grove Art Festival. And it was really quite beautiful to see the students interacting with everyone that was there and presenting their art and talking about that passion that they have with their art. Where I myself bought about, what, about seven or eight pieces from my own kids, because it was lovely. And I hung them up and I put them up there and they saw the pictures and loved it. But anyhow, we really want to give you, guys, yes, yes, yes. Listen, man, you know, come on, they're out there, they're for sale. Anyhow, but it's really wonderful that you guys allow them to go ahead and do this. I think it's a, it's a great venue for them to, you know, to display their art and, and everything that they do. They're wonderful students. Ms. Goldstein does a great job with these students and on a yearly basis. So again, I want to thank you guys for that. And on another note, if you can do something for our HOSA also, it would be a very nice thing for you guys to do. So I really appreciate you guys. It's good seeing you guys again. I haven't seen you guys in a little bit. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And stay right there and we'll take a photo. I love the, the small scale. Like I was telling you, down in the lobby, it makes you have to really get up close and concentrate. And, and you know, so many times with larger pieces of art, you're looking from a distance. But this is just, the small scale is so refreshing and, and such a novel, I, display for us. Keep them coming.
Shortbread.
Okay, so now we will do item 4E. I want to make sure I'm not missing something, is the presentation on our financial report? Do we have?
We have Enrique Yarena. He's a partner with our Caballero firm in Yarena and Garcia LLP.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. For the record, my name is Enrique Yarena and I'm a partner with CFLG, your external auditor. I'm here to give you a brief presentation of our reports that are included in the city's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year end of September 30th, 2021. Technology is great when it works. Doesn't work?
No.
One second, I apologize. Okay, so the first item I'd like to highlight is in the introductory section of this financial report. It's a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting received by the city for the September 30th, 2020, annual comprehensive financial report. It's on page Roman numeral six. This is a very prestigious award that the city has continuously received. And we expect that the city will receive it for the September 30th, 2021 report, which is going to be submitted for consideration. Our first report is on page one, and this is the independent auditors' report. And I'm just gonna walk you through that report. The first section is titled Report on Financial Statements, and it discusses the items that we audited. And it states that we have audited the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of and for the fiscal year end of September 30th, 2021. This is followed by management's responsibility, which is that management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. And our responsibility as your auditor is to express our opinion on, based on our audit. And we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted standards in the United States of America as well as government auditing standards. Our opinion is found at the bottom of this report. And here you see an example of an unmodified opinion and the only kind of opinion that you would want to be associated with. And it states that in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of September 30th, 2021. The remainder of our reports are included in the compliance section, where, which are at the end of the document. It begins on page 112, if you have the printed document, or 137 of the PDF. The first report in this section is traditionally referred to as a Yellow Book Report. And it's our independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. This report is broken down into two sections. You have internal control or financial reporting, and you have compliance and other matters. And in essence, we will report to you any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses related to internal control of financial reporting or compliance and other matters. And I'm pleased to note that we do not have any matters to bring to your attention. This year, the city met the requirement for a federal single audit because it incurred expenditures exceeding $750,000 of federal awards. So you have a, a single audit report that's included here as well. And here we give you an opinion on compliance based on the compliance requirements that we tested as part of our single audit. And again, I'm pleased to report that we do not have any findings to bring to your attention at this time. The last item in this section that I'm going to cover is the management letter in accordance with the rules of the Audit General of the State of Florida. On this letter has required communications, but one of the things that it lets us do is communicate any opportunities for improvement in financial management or any immaterial instances of non-compliance that did not rise to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness, but it will still merit your attention. I'm pleased to note that we do not have any items to bring to your attention related to that. And also in your packet, you should have received a communication letter that's provided a conclusion. These are required communications from your external auditor, the professional standards require us to, to present to you. And one of the things that we cover is, did we have any difficulties throughout the audit? Did we have any disagreements with management? I actually like to take this opportunity to thank William Tammy and their team for all the support. They were excellent and they're so responsive, which is what allows us to complete what we do. So very grateful for everything you do. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I certainly think you can come back again next year with that kind of report. Again, this is a testament to how the city is run by the manager and his staff. It seems to me, year after year. It seems to me year after year, you folks come in here and independently audit us from the outside. I mean, with no collusion from the city whatsoever. And here you are announcing to us here all that there's no findings. That's incredible. It's not the first time this happened.
No, definitely not. And we purposely changed the team as well. So because you want an element of unpredictability. So the in charge has changed and the theme is always the same. William is extremely responsive. He's on top of the things that we request. It's a very smooth audit.
Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Thank you for the work we you do. I was glad to hear you say that you changed the team because I think that's, you know, as good as and and I have the utmost utmost faith in our finance director, who is also our city manager, William and his team. And I can tell by the when we do the budget process, you know, everything is very clear. It's presented to us. So it's it's not surprising to me that you find also that it's they're very easy to work with and that you're getting the information you need. My understanding is it's good to change the team and just have a new set of eyes look at it. So it's not so predictable. So I'm glad to hear that. You do this project, this process for other cities also?
Yes.
And it's not usually my understanding is that having no recommendations is not the norm, right? That very often you find recommendations and and findings, significant findings
Correct.
for other cities.
It's a testament to your team. And William is extremely responsive. It's not just part of our process as your external auditor. We have ongoing communication throughout the year. But William definitely utilizes that every time there's a question he involves us, he asks us. So it's not something that when we come out here for the audit, we find things, we know what's going on throughout the year. So when we come here, it's already been discussed and implemented, which is what yields results like this.
Thank you so much. On behalf of us and the city, I think it brings for all our residents a nice warm feeling to know that our financial situation is is handled, you know, we need money, obviously, like all municipalities, we could always use more, but what we have, it's being handled in a very responsible manner, reported properly. I know from FEMA funds and other when we have disasters and we need to request reimbursement of from other government agencies, William and his team have always, and I've heard this from so many people on the outside, that Miami Springs is one of the first cities to get reimbursed because of the diligence of their team and not just submitting the request for reimbursement, but in making sure all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed and, you know, everything is documented consistently with what the request require, and that benefits our city immensely. So thank you very much for the report. Is there for your watching over our shoulder, right? And making sure that we're doing what we need to do from a fiscal responsibility reporting, I guess, aspect. Councilman, do you have anything to add?
Thank you.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, the next agenda item is the presentation from our city lobbyist Jose Fuentes from Becker on the status of the city's state funding request.
Good evening. Jose Fuentes Becker Polikoff, 1210 Amber Plaza. Well, first of all, thank you, council member, mayor, council members, vice mayor and manager for for making sure you they made the trek up to Tallahassee this legislative session. I think it was important, it continues to be important face to face time with your elected officials in Tallahassee while they're working on budgetary items and other legislative issues. This year, we are, you know, at this point, and and I don't want to jinx it because we obviously still have to wait for the governor's review of the budget, the budget passed today. Today was Sine Die, the last day of the sixty, I guess, sixty one day legislative session, right, Max? And Max Losner, my colleague is here, and I think he's made more presentations this past year than I have actually to the city council. So I want to go over a few of the items that I know the council supported and recommended for this year's appropriation request. Miami Springs Senior Center, the supplemental meal and services, which that item was sponsored, was presented by Representative Tom Fabrizio and Representative Brian Avila, who is the speaker pro tem, and Senator Manny Diaz received in in this version of the budget, $750,000. Miami Springs Erosion Control and Stabilization and Drainage Project, which was presented by Representative Avila, Brian Avila as well, and Senator Manny Diaz received $2 million in this year's current appropriation and budget that passed today. Miami Springs Hook Square Pump House Replacement, which was presented also by Representative Brian Avila and Senator Manny Diaz has was appropriated $750,000. And then I think one that we heard a lot of comments on Zoom meetings, and I kept getting the east and west mixed up a little bit, I guess, is the Miami Springs South Drives and South Drive Road and Stormwater Improvements, which received $2 million in this state appropriations package for a total of $5 million, $500,000? Five million, $5 million is what it received. So we're really happy with the way the process went. The state passed a quite a large budget of $112.1 billion. One of the largest state budgets presented. There was numerous legislative issues that obviously took the majority of the time in this legislative session. And we'll make a more formal presentation to talk about those items. I know there was concern by members of the council and and the mayor on preemptive issues that could impact the city. Some of them did pass. They weren't as bad as they started. So we'll, we can talk about that, but at the end of the day, you know, so this is the typical situation that happens in the Florida legislature. There has been preemptive bills that have passed in the past. And then, of course, there's other bills that have passed this year that were very positive for the state of Florida, and we see we'll we'll give you a full report at a later time, but I wanted to bring up Max because Max Losner, who's my colleague and and honestly, the left and right arm sometimes, who helps out in our process. I just want to recognize him for his efforts as well. So
I want to recognize both of you because say, and Max, I don't know if if our residents realize the work that that Jose Fuentes and Max Losner do on behalf of, you know, with their firm Becker up in Tallahassee and at the county level for us. They're our lobbyists, and I can tell you when I first got on the council, and I've said this before, I didn't understand why we as elected officials needed to, you know, have lobbyists, you know. Shouldn't we be talking to the legislators in Tallahassee at the county level? And I can tell you, there is no way that any of us could keep up with the legislation, with the bills, keep piling them on the top of the pile because basically that's what it is. There's a certain amount of money that's going to be allocated. And if your bills, if you don't have representatives like Max and and Jose do for us, for our city, being in Tallahassee and at the county level, keep putting the stuff at the top of the pile, making sure everything's, you know, obviously everything has value, but what we care about is making sure that that our city gets what it needs. And I, for all the years that I've been on the council, the work that you do, that both of you do and your firm does for our city is is just so, so, so impressive. And I think getting five million, which years ago, I know we would get like one project, and this time we've gotten four. Last year, we got three. This is a testament to the work that you do for us in making sure that that our requests, our appropriations requests are getting the attention they need so that they can be properly funded. So very, very appreciative of this. And I know we have to keep our fingers crossed that the governor doesn't veto them, but getting this far past the House and Senate in this session is a huge, huge accomplishment for our city. And these are all, with the exception of the senior center, which every other four projects are for flood control and water projects, resiliency projects for our canal bank erosions and a whole bunch of projects that are just really needed for our city for the maintenance of our city and to keep our city from flooding after major events. And very, very costly projects. And without the work that you've done, we wouldn't have them. So thank you very much.
I I I would be remiss if I did not recognize the the efforts by Senator Manny Diaz. I can tell you that he kept Miami Springs in play the entire time. His staff worked with us every day. You know, we're up there for the sixty one days of of session. And I can prove it because my my hotel status is now titanium. But but and also Representative Brian Avila, who is so, he is a Miami Springs Springs resident who's truly dedicated to making sure that the Springs also it was in play for its appropriation. So we really deserve, he deserves a lot of credit for the work he did. And, you know, Tom Fabrizio, Representative Fabrizio, who also pitched hit in in his effort to make sure that the Springs was also playing. I think the important part, and and Max, you correct me, we request, we requested what we received was exactly what we requested. That is so unusual. We have with us, you know, former state representative Javier Fernandez in the audience, and and I, you know, he knows I was going to recognize him. And he knows how hard this is to do. So I I've got to tell you that, you know, we we really are very proud of our state senator and our state representative.
And and I did want to mention that that's the other part of it, that you do the work for our city and bringing it to the attention of our legislators, but who really come through for us are our legislators in Tallahassee, Senator Manny Diaz and Representative Brian Avila, who for years and years and years consistently listen to what we need and work very, very hard to make sure that with their colleagues, that our projects get the attention they need. And also this year for Representative Fabrizio, who helped worked with Representative Avila to bring our our needs, our appropriation request to the attention of both the Senate and the House. So we're extremely grateful to them. Without them, you bring it to their attention for us, and they're the ones that make it happen, that they work very, very hard to to make sure that that are that our city benefits from their work up in Tallahassee, and they really do an amazing job in representing us up there. So very appreciative to to our senator and our representative. And hello, nice to see you. Are you going to introduce him, Jose?
He's here on another matter.
Oh, okay.
Related. And I think, you know, I'm embarrassing him enough at this point.
All right, okay.
Let's not compromise him any further here.
Thank you very much. And 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 council members, again, it was great, you know, having you there for the meetings that we had with the council, with the state representatives and and Senate members and even the the speaker, you know, which is, you know, always amazing that we had that opportunity to do that. But it's very important for the members of of our body, both in the House and the Senate, to see that there's an important need for these dollars and that they make such an impact on the communities that you serve. You know, I know it was Council Vice Mayor Jackie Ravel's first trip, and I and I know, I know she asked a lot of questions. I'm so glad because it's it's important to ask those questions. So you understand what's what's Tallahassee about. It's it's a little bit of a different world. But again, we're so happy that it turned out like it's supposed to, you know, a very once in a, once in a lifetime type of thing, but everything turned out exactly as as planned, and we're very proud of the work that we did and the members did as well.
Thank you so much, Jose. Yes, councilman?
Yeah, I I want to echo the mayor's words and and appreciate all the hard work that went into getting these appropriations through the process, and we're not out of the woods yet. But they look pretty good for the city. I would be remiss if I didn't point out that we had one, one appropriation.
He would said it to me the other day.
Appropriation that was pending, that was to help the city refurbish the Miami Springs War Memorial that hasn't been fixed in a long time, and we have, we've been doing some fundraising on our own, but I appreciate you guys' efforts on that, and we have some other conversations pending. And 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 this is also for the audience here and those listening at home, that we are continuing the the work of of raising the money to refurbish that that monument which honors the men and women in uniform who have lost their lives defending our country. And she left, so I couldn't, she Connie Rodriguez, last Saturday, as we, I was walking into the our American Legion Post 32 meeting, said to me that, and she had mentioned this a few weeks ago, that as soon as the Girl Scouts finished their campaign selling cookies, the next project that they were going to take on was to raise money for the War Memorial. So don't worry about it. We're going, we're going to be asking you for contributions and all in all manner of ways. And but thank you for the effort, though, and I appreciate Representative Avila's presenting that project then and and Senator Manny Diaz. And as you know, you know, things get presented and 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 again, the governor has, what, ninety days to sign the budget? So we don't know, but we'll keep our fingers crossed. But thank you for the effort.
Thank you. And we'll work, you know, with the executive office to make sure through communications from your, from the council, the man, the manager, we send that to the mayor's, to the governor's office. But I also want to note that even though I did not, we were not able to get the War Memorial, I was stopped at the River Cities Festival and made a major contribution to the effort. So Richard Block here picked my pocket. So.
Okay, all right. Thank you again, Jose and and Max. Did anyone have any other? Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say thank you for your hospitality. Being a newcomer, it was a little, I thought, you know, I was a little bit nervous. I didn't know what to expect, and I I enjoyed my time there. Your organization skills are impeccable, like our agendas, our expectations. Everything was very smooth and to see the the eye to eye and the the relation between you and our representatives at work, you speaking for our city and me looking at you, I I see that it's organic and and you are there for us and and for that specific purpose. So I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor.
Jose, I the the only thing I can say is, you know, thanks again for the professionalism that you continually continually exhibit up there for all sixty one days. And you're you're there for, if you're not there, Max is there. If Max isn't there, you're there, or you're both there. And it just, year after year, you just seem to able able to keep these guys head headed in the right direction relative to the Springs and our needs. And I'd like to thank you for that.
I think that part's easy with the members because they really do love Miami Springs and they do care about this community. So but thank you for the kind words. I really do appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Max. Okay, and and again, a big, big thank you to Senator Manny Diaz and Representative Brian Avila and Representative Tom Fabrizio for assisting Representative Avila's, as my understanding is, he couldn't present the the bills himself since he was speaker pro tem, right? So
No.
Right. So he couldn't carry the senior center project because he's the chair of the committee that that project would go through.
Okay, so did it for us. That's wonderful. So we're extremely, they have consistently, year after year after year, have shown that their hearts are in our community of providing for our residents and for our community. And so many times they've gotten the appropriations at the last minute through for us through the House and the and the Senate, and that's a testament to their commitment to our residents and our community and to following through with with our needs, making sure that we get what we need for the city. So we're very, very grateful to them, working for us in Tallahassee and you representing us in Tallahassee, our needs, discussing them.
So much.
Thank you so much. All right.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, so the next agenda item, and somebody correct me if I'm missing something because we kind of skipped around, is okay, yard of the month.
The Jharasany family, are they here? They did not answer our calls, but they they were aware that they were being recognized tonight.
Okay, so I just want to mention that the yard of the month for this month is Jharasany family at 1117 Glendale Drive, and we do have a certificate of appreciation for them, which will have it delivered to their house. But we're very grateful for them for keeping their yard beautiful. It's an enjoyment for every one of our residents. I think when when our neighbors really go all out to make their yards beautiful, it's kind of encourages us to do our part. So we're very grateful to them, and if anyone has chance, just drive by 117 Glendale Drive and take a peek. Okay, so the next agenda item is open forum, and we have several people signed up to speak at open forum. I just want to remind everyone that open forum is a process where it is literally one way communication. It's a process for residents to speak to the council, all of us at one time. And you have our undivided attention. We are listening. We will hear you, but it is not But it is not a process where, because it's not an agenda item where we respond to you. If after the meeting, if you want more information, you can reach out to any of us or to our city manager or city clerk and ask for how you can follow up with, if you had a question. Okay. So, and also in the interest of time, we ask that you try to keep your comments in public forum to two minutes. All right. So I'm going to try to read the handwriting. Oh, Councilman Block. Virginia, this is Virginia Gardens Councilman, distinguished Councilman, Richard Block.
Okay, but I'm not here with, with that hat on. I'm here for the Miami Springs War Memorial. And Post 32 Sullivan Batcock wants to thank Miami Springs and Julie and all the people that made this possible to have a, a stand there. We managed to collect $5,107 in the three days, of which Mayor Dino personally contributed $400. The Chief of Police in Medley contributed $200. And Jose said that I, I strong-darned him for another $100. And our Chief of Police contributed $100. So I guess Councilman Vasquez said that we got knocked out of the ballpark up in Tallahassee. So we have to change our strategy a little bit and move this thing into like a community-based affair, touching our, you know, our societies are like the Lions Club. The, oh, and before I forget, Jennifer Graham here in, of the Miami Springs Historical Society. And I have to disclose that I'm the Executive Vice President of Operations for that society. She was the one mover to put all the troops in line, see? Because we were making money and stuffing it everywhere. And she would spend every night to collect all those funds and keep them in, in form and, and keep them in order. Because we were, we were selling like crazy, but we had no order. But she put order in the affair. So the Miami Springs Historical Society is coming head-on to help us with this monument project. But we need to get every, everybody in the community, in Miami Springs and in Virginia Gardens and in Medley, working together, every citizen, somehow get to them, to let them know, we're going to build this. I know it's a public-private affair. I, I'm going to approach Mayor Dino and our lawyer to find out if infrastructure money could be used as a park abetment, a place for meditation or stuff like that, that will allow the cities to use some infrastructure money there. But we're not expecting the, the cities to come up with the totality of this thing. And we're talking about being 100, 120,000, 130,000. We got about $11,000 in the bank now. But we're going to keep plugging at it. And you, you guys are going to get a brand-new spanking new war monument. Or, or my name isn't Councilman Richard L. Block. Thank you very much.
Councilman. Okay, we have Councilwoman Lisette Ayala from the town of Medley. She spoke before. She's, yes. Okay. She signed up for public forum too. Okay, Jennifer Graham.
Hello. So I'm Jennifer Graham. I live at 75 Deer Run. I'm also the president of the Miami Springs Historical Society. And I'm always grateful for the city's support and the members of our community for their support. The Miami Springs Historic Society does recognize that Glenn Curtis was terrifically involved in flight, naval aviation, and the development of the entire industry. As you know, that's a huge part of our history. We have come alongside the War Monument Project, the American Legion. I've been meeting with this team since they made me aware of their efforts. And as many of you, if you've not heard, our Speaker Bill Tolman on the military members that we lost, there are no greater sacrifices that have been made and the stories of these men and their families from this city of Miami Springs as well as surrounding areas. We're so grateful that we have this monument in our area. And we look forward to working with this team on the project and the marketing plan to raise the funds needed. Our target goal, it to cut ground, if you will, on this project is November 11th. We will be hitting you hard into the entire city and surrounding cities will be hitting very hard to all the corporations to raise this money during that time. So we appreciate that. And I appreciate the opportunity to participate with you. As always, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, you, for your service to our community with the Historical Society. Okay, our next speaker is Kathy Doyle.
Hi, I may have signed up on the wrong list because I'm going to talk about the mural. Okay, so I may be on the yellow list. Maybe I should be on the yellow list instead of the blue list. Does it matter? Because it's, it's on the agenda and I signed. Is that all right?
You can go ahead. If you wanted to speak now on it or what, well, let me ask our city attorney, which should she sign up for the, under the agenda items?
It, she could, she could speak in general, but it's an item that's going to be considered for, before the council tonight. So at that time, you may also consider opening it up. It's your.
But would you be okay with waiting, Kathy? It'll be a little more, I think. I'm sorry. No, no, no problem. But just remind me when we go to have that.
It's, it's discretionary whether you want to entertain public comment, any, any public comment on that item. So.
And I, I think we do.
Yeah.
So.
I, I think, yeah, I think.
So I think it'll be more effective if we listen to it then, if that's okay with you. Okay, so the next person on public forum is Stephen Sejas under Zoom.
Hello.
Hey.
Hi. Hi, I'm Adam Mayor, City Council. Thank you for an opportunity to talk. I just wanted to call in and thank you guys for all the hard work on the issue with Factory Town. I really appreciate everything you guys have done to keep the noise away. One other issue I wanted to bring up was at the War Memorial. If, when we do some sort of festival or whatever there, if a sign can be put on top of the memorial telling people not to climb it. I was there during the River City Festivals and, I mean, the amount of people climbing on it to take pictures. And when I mean climbing on it, I don't mean the stairs. I mean on top of the actual memorial. You know, it was just, it was saddening to see that. And two more things. One, I don't know if you guys are going to discuss the color palette idea for houses. But I mean, I would urge you guys not to put a color palette. The color palette's not going to affect my house. My house is not any of those colors that people don't like. But I think as a government, you know, there should be some tolerance for homeowners. We're not living in a, in a gated homeowners association. And I just feel like an encumbrance on top of an owner now to go to the city to get permission to paint your house a certain color. You know, ordinances, codes, they should be passed for, you know, public safety, quality of life, not for financial benefits of certain people. And I, I just urge some tolerance for people these days because, you know, not everybody can afford to paint their house immediately. Or, you know, we have a lot of elderly folks and, you know, sometimes these ordinances just, they cause problems for, for those that don't mean ill. And the last thing on the mural, if I could just say one quick thing, because I got to put my three-year-old to bed. You know, the fact that we're debating whether it's a wall or a mural, what we should be debating with is whether this is in the best interest of the city. I think the teachers have gone in there, fixed up a building that was an eyesore, in my opinion. And we should work with them if we think that, you know, art's the best way to go in this city. Instead of trying to make them paint over it and argue whether, you know, it's too many colors on a wall or, you know. I think it's fairly obvious. It's, it's a mural. And that's what worries me when we get into a color palette. Are we going to get into an argument about shades of colors? And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sejas. Okay, so that ends the public forum. No one else, no one else is on Zoom, right, Erica? Okay. And is Councilman Fahad still on?
Yes.
You can hear us, Councilman?
Yes, I am.
All right. So let's move to Agenda Item Six, Approval of Council Minutes from February 22nd Workshop and February 28th Regular Meeting.
Through the Chair motion to move 6A and 6B.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Bass?
Hi.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. All right. We move to Agenda Item Seven, 7A, Recommendation by Board of Adjustment to City Council to Uphold Staff's Decision on the UTD Administrative Appeal. Counselor, would you like to speak on that?
Yes. Hi, Jose Arango for the record. So this is an appeal of the Planning Officials Interpretation of the Zoning Ordinance. It went to the Board of Adjustment pursuant to the code. The Board of Adjustment considered the matter. And after hearing both sides, both of the parties, from the property owner and the city, the affirmed this planning officials determination. Where we're at right now is, so we have this on, listed on the agenda as a recommendation by Board, by the Board of Adjustment to the City Council to uphold staff's decision on the UTT, UTD, United Teachers of Data Administrative Appeal pursuant to Section 150 GI of the code. The decision before the council is to either affirm the recommendation made by the Board of Adjustment or request a further meeting so that it basically turns into a hearing, which is, would be similar to what was presented to the Board of Adjustment. So I wanted to clarify what was on the agenda. It's either to affirm in whole the recommendation by the Board of Adjustment or have a hearing on the matter at a later date, which I think under the code, it's the last Wednesday of the month. So this would, in that capacity, the City Council will be acting as the Board of Appeals.
Okay. And that would be here in, with us.
Correct. Now, if the, well, if the decision is to affirm the Board of Adjustment, then the, the applicant, which is UTD in this matter, would have the opportunity to appeal. And in which case it'll also go before the Board of Appeals, which is also the City Council. So there's, there should have been included in your agenda, the recommendation, the staff report, all the items that were presented to the Board of Adjustment. And then there, of course, the Board of Adjustment's recommendation, which we could enter into the record. But it's basically now, it's just either affirm or request that the item be deferred for.
A hearing. Okay. All right. And then let me go ahead and let Kathy Doyle, since you wanted to speak and we're into this agenda item.
Oh, yes.
Is that all right to?
So this is a, this is a quasi-judicial matter. This is not to formulate policy. So then there may be some confusion on that. We're not here to consider an amendment to the code. We're here to apply the existing law to the facts, which is what was, what the Board of Adjustment did. And the city, but it's, again, it's simply a recommendation made to the City Council. The City Council will render a final decision. But that's only to apply the existing law to the facts. So regarding comments by the public, you could entertain it. It's your discretion, but you don't have to.
Okay. I would like to let Ms. Doyle, since she signed up to speak at public forum, but she wanted to speak on this agenda item, to give her the opportunity to, to go ahead and, and speak.
Hi, council members. My name is Kathy Doyle. I'm a resident of Miami Springs, a 2085 Miami Springs Avenue since 1980 and a proud retired teacher from the Dade County Public School System. And I taught in this community for 36 years. So I'm bragging a little bit, just because I'm proud of Miami Springs. Okay. And I have to admit that I'm also, you know, a past teacher. So I would like to voice my support for the UTD mural and encourage the council to vote to maintain it, however way you have to do that. First, if the city wants to regulate murals, I think I've got my glasses on, which are a fast-growing art form around the world, then there should be a separate code written. Applying sign and color codes to a mural is ludicrous. Secondly, we have murals that have not been approved on other educational buildings, including on the front of the AIE school for which Mr. Fahad serves as principal. I know that because Anchor Club helped paint it back in the day. And it was a one-day build the playground kind of activity. And we all pitched in as a community. And I'm sure nobody asked you guys whether we should do it or not. And the back wall of the high school has murals on it from the art classes. The UTD mural faces the parking lot, so teachers and staff are the primary viewers. It is barely visible as the public drives by at 40 miles per hour on a commercial street. Third, we have allowed many more colorful, less subtle walls to exist in our city, like the long-hanging painted surfboards and ocean walls at the Old Woody's. Most importantly, this assault on our teachers' organization, in light of all the other affronts to the profession our teachers have endured during the pandemic and during the recent legislative session, is truly adding salt to the wounds. The mural is a beautiful piece of artwork capturing the altruistic aspirations of our long-suffering public school teachers. Please let our city embrace the beauty and the message and find a way to let both survive. Thank you.
Thank you. So.
May I ask a point of?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Um, so I want to be clear, Counselor. What we're being asked to do tonight, I just want to be absolutely clear. Because I don't want to violate any sunshine laws or anything like that. I want to be, I want to do due diligence as we are elected to do. The options before us tonight is to decide whether this body is going to accept the recommendation of the Planning Board. Correct. Or to decide that we want to hold a hearing where we can have discussions. Is that? Board of Adjustment, not Planning Board, but yes, essentially, yes. Board of Adjustments, I'm sorry. Right. So it's either to. But we would sit in, we would sit as, as that, right? You would sit in the capacity, if it's deferred, okay? Or if an appeal is taken, you would sit in the capacity as the Board of Appeals. So. So that. Board of Appeals. Yes. Okay. So that decision is either made by affirming the recommendation by the Board of Adjustment by motion. Or, and I'm reading directly from the section of the code I previously quoted, or any City Council member may request further meeting to be conducted on any board recommendation before City Council, sitting as the Board of Appeals on the last Wednesday of each month, which requests shall be voted upon and may be granted upon an affirmative majority vote of the City Council. That's where we're at today. So it's either affirm or move. Or vote on. Exactly. On the recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Through the Chair. As, as is true, ladies and gentlemen, with, with, with any legislation, particularly legislation that passes, there's pros and cons. You know, 51% of the people can love it, 49 can hate it. I mean, that's, that's a given. That's part of what democracy is supposed to be all about, isn't it? Unfortunately, we are faced with a situation here that, and I can't say that back in the day, and I sat up here for all of the deliberations that went on to create that. that, and I can't say that back in the day, and I sat up here for all of the deliberations that went on to create that palette and most, mostly voted against all of it. Unfortunately, it passed, and you, and you go with the flow. So again, anytime legislation passes that is close to the cusp, there's going to be repercussions. And tonight is evidence of that happening. The Board of Adjustment, in its charge, correctly adjudicated their authority. It is in the book. It says that's what we will do, and that's how they accordingly voted. There's nothing we as a City Council can do about that. Now, having said that, this can pass. It could come to us. But it's incumbent upon us to do something about it to change the problem and how we got here in the first place. And that's what I will support. There's no way I can sit up here and vote no tonight against this because it would be inappropriate of me. It's, it's in the book. It's the law. So that's kind of where we're at. And again, I just to, just to applaud the, the Board of Adjustment for doing their job. That's all they did. Now, there were several people that voted to go with it on that board that I personally know that don't agree with it. That's not the point, though. That's what I'm, the point I'm trying to make right here. So don't be concerned by how we have to react to this tonight. I don't think it's over. I think testimony is who's in chambers tonight here to support it. So that's my two cents on this matter for the moment.
Councilman, do you have anything to say?
Um, I just did some, you know, I put my notes together because I know this is a very heavy topic, so I'm just going to, before I, I vote, before I, I say my vote, I want to give my reason why. So I'm going to just go straight through it, and then we'll take it from there. First and foremost, I'm not against murals. I'm a former teacher. I taught for seven years, not as long as a lot of you, but I do have a passion for, for kids and for teaching kids, and I'm very, I have a soft spot for that. But also as a teacher and an educator, I did promote rules and regulations and democracy as well. So I do play by the rules. I'm very by the book, based on the work that I've done here on my council since April of last year. I was chosen to, I was chosen to follow the laws in place, and that is what I'm here to do. However, I'm not just here to just say yes or no. I like to give justification to my choice so that I can give a fair picture to my constituents of why I chose the way that I did and not come off as a selfish person, if that's what they, they look at me as. The efforts being made to keep the mural are the same effort I would have liked to have seen take place in efforts of pursuing an ordinance for a mural of such caliber, since there was no specific ordinance in place for such type of murals slash signs, so that this situation would not have transpired. Honestly, I'm a big advocate of bringing ideas to table, bringing ordinances to the table. I don't shy from them. If I find out there's substance and I believe in it, I'm here to serve you. So I wish that somebody would have brought this item to the table so that we can go ahead and work together as a council to get an ordinance in place that would help to get that mural on the wall and stay on the wall. Okay? Secondly, creating an ordinance for the purpose of this mural is not the purpose for which ordinances are created for. But I will support an updated ordinance to capture and include the allowance of murals with a fair approach, which would be beneficial and, and optional improvement to Northwest 36th Street. I'm open to murals. I think 36th Street does need some, some help. To this extreme, I don't know. I'm, I'm not here, I'm not an artist. But I, I for one, I'm very fair, and I'm not going to create an ordinance, me personally, for a personal advantage or for a specific purpose. We had a lot of speculation with the Gateway Overlay Ordinance that was put together, and they said that it was, you know, there was a lot of animosity going on in the city that the ordinance was done for that specific purpose. And it wasn't. There's even a FAQ on our website that, you know, addressed a lot of the concerns that the citizens had. And that ordinance was actually put in place before the building went up and they fell through, and they did everything according to the ordinance. In this situation, we're kind of like working backwards, which makes this things a lot harder. Referencing our sign and commercial ordinance, the UTT building mural does, does bear a specific relationship and purpose, and is a direct illustration of what the union stands for, for which is public education and empowerment of both teachers and students. Viewing the ordinance in its most broadest form, where there is no specific order, when there is no specific ordinance in place as stated by UTD attorney in their PowerPoint presentation to the BOA Board, leads the mural to fall within the elements of ordinance 150030. The pictorial identification of a child reading a book is a form of learning. With a stack of books labeled with writing promotes awareness of what the UTD stands for. The mural does not, the mural does not direct attend, wait, the mural does direct attention of an institution and the service it promotes, which is directly represented on a wall clearly visible to the general public for which, for interpretation of such activity taking place within this building, which is not located on a public space for public art. This is private property. This is a form of advertising. A mural that does not conform to the requirements of code could be considered a sign. Um, in respects to Chris Hyde's decision, obviously you can't paint a mural with three colors. I mean, that's ridiculous. I will side with Chris Hyde on this topic. For now, I, sometimes I haven't sided with Chris Hyde on many topics, but I'm not one to work in reverse. I'm not saying like, you know, Councilman Bob Best said, you know, it's not the end. I do think that we can create something that, that, that can work, and I, I want to invite murals. I just don't want to accept and invite it in this form with, with bad taste, you know? And that's, that's my position on how I feel about this mural.
Madam Chair.
Also, um, there is other items in there. I mean, I know that the approach to the mural and the way that was come to council with, they asked maybe some questions here and there. But by default, I mean, when you really, really care about something and you want to see something goes up and stay up, you're going to exercise all the extremities that you need to do before you invest time and a lot of money and respect to the artist that put his time into putting up the mural and make sure that that mural is going to stay up. Um, so I just, I also, I do know that the city requires some sort of rendering on any design, whether it's a sign or a mural or whatever the case may be. You're still supposed to present the design to the city. At that point, perhaps discussions would have arisen and said, listen, a mural to this caliber, I don't know, you're going to have to, you know, get an ordinance, bring it to the council. And honestly, gladly, I would have created that argument for you. I mean, I, I, I have nothing against murals. But I do have a problem going against the laws that I have in front of me and the ones that I have to exercise. And that's it.
I'm confused. Because that's why I asked appoint a procedure. How we were going to proceed? I did not know we were going to do this because I'm ready to talk about this. I just, I wasn't sure if what was going to be proposed is we have a recommendation. Are we going to go with the recommendation or not? Or are we going to go with a hearing? Those are the options. Am I still? And I have a PhD, but sometimes I get a little confused. No, because I mean, I, I
It's two, it's two decisions.
No, no, but the, the, my colleagues have spoken. So I'd like to then speak on this too, if we're not considering the specific options. Chair, may I?
Let's listen, because you asked a question that you're confused, so let's let the counselor.
So, so, so a council member would be making a motion to affirm the Board of Adjustment's recommendation? And it would be taken to a vote accordingly, and they may, the council members may, I guess, you know, give a little bit more commentary as to why they are voting a particular way. Or it would be a vote to request a, or a motion to request a further meeting. So that's also, so it's one of the others. A further meeting, that's the other meeting.
Okay.
So someone has to make
So, so let's do this. Is there a motion on this item?
Madam Mayor, wait.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, I, I want to, I want to speak because I thought we were going to be making motions, but we're already talking about how we see this, this, this item. And this item has been in discussion outside of this body for about a year. All right, so it's the first time that as a body, we get an opportunity to weigh in on this matter. You know, I've, I've talked about this matter only twice from the DA's, and I've done so specifically on the issues of vandalism of UTD. So I haven't said anything else about that, other than I thought that was wrong, and we should try to find out who did it and to prosecute them, whether it was UTD or anywhere else about vandalism in the city. But what I have found, and I have read the minutes of the different deliberative bodies, and I do respect, you know, our volunteers who are running these boards, and they have the, a job to do and to render decisions based on their understanding of what the issue is at hand. But what bothers me or concerns me more than anything else as an elected official in the city is all the discussions that have happened outside of the purviews of this body, right? As an elected official, like all of you, people stop you at Mylum and wherever you are and give you one opinion or another opinion. And what are we doing, allowing murals? And some people saying they didn't have a right to do that, but I like the mural. So it seems to me that of the issues that have come before us, since I've been in council about 11 months, there's a lot of contention. I understand the legal questions that the our, our, our city attorney raised. Specifically, we're dealing with this, and we're not dealing with the purviews. But it would behoove me if I didn't share that I think that there have been a lot of things said about this issue that should make us pause and ponder whether, as some of you have mentioned, we have appropriate codes and, and the process that happened and, and so forth and so on because of the nature of it. Right? You know, we've had people go to the compliance board, they build a shed without permission. They went there and after some deliberation, they were told, okay, build a shed, but this is going to happen or whatever, or knock the shed down, right? And, and so I don't want to take anything away from the folks that deliberated this, but I think that we have a responsibility to really look at this in a more detailed, ponderated manner. Right? Then just say, okay, we agree with the recommendations of the board or the last, of the planning board, the last board that brought it here, because that was a three to two vote. And usually their votes are five zero. And usually against people that are appealing, so I, I characterize this in this manner because I think we have a greater responsibility. And like all of you have mentioned, I take responsibility for however I vote on an issue. And if I'm not, if I'm not able to explain to those who disagree with me why, I don't ask them to agree with me. I ask them to give me the opportunity to explain. And so they, at least they understood where I was coming from, because I am voting on their behalf, right? And we're not discussing this in front of 14,000 residents. We're doing it in this august body that's here to represent the best interest of the city. And so so my view of this is, and I'm just going to say this for the record, right? Because I don't want things to be misconstrued, because I've already been accusing some things in public about my feelings about the UTD and about the mural, et cetera, et cetera. And, and everyone knows this because I ran on the fact that I'm an educator. And I've spent almost 40 years in education, and I'm a product of the public school systems. Right? And I have seen how this issue has cast an additional aspersions, as was already said, about teachers and about teaching. But in addition to that, we have been working really hard here through an economic development board to attract my people to our city and to invest in our city, which is something that UTD did by spending millions of dollars to build up this building. So I'm not saying that I'm, you know, 100% behind them. I'm just saying we have to see it in this broad aspect. And I know at the end of the day, as Counselor has reminded us, we have clear options. And so with all due respect to the volunteers that do hard work on these boards and commissions, I think there are other underlying issues here that need to be addressed. And so I would want us to have the opportunity, right? To sit as an appeal body, not just to say we're going to vote on this or that, but rather to, and I don't, we don't have the time tonight for this, to really hear out all the aspects of this. And, and, you know, with all due respect to my colleagues here on the, on the DA's, that's the way I feel about it. And I may agree with, with the city on this. But, you know, the, in, in the introduction to this, in the words of the, of our city counselor, and with all due respect to Mr. Hyde, he made an interpretation of the rule. Right? So I think that there are sufficient elements here to want us to look at this a little more deeply. And that's what I would be in favor of doing tonight.
Councilman, I want to hear from the council first. Did you?
Just does Walter want to?
Uh, Councilman Fahed?
Yes, ma'am. I have, thank you. Yeah, I have something to say. So thank you for your patience, because I, I had to travel for work, but I definitely wanted to weigh in on this. I just wanted to say that aesthetically speaking, I see it as a piece of art. I think that it's beautiful. I think that it's tastefully done, and I believe that it's pleasing aesthetically. I think that also thematically, I'm a former language arts supervisor with Miami Dade County Schools. I oversaw 16, the 16 lowest performing high schools and the 10 lowest performing middle schools, many of which were, were, were in the inner city. So advocating for the, the literacy needs of minorities is something that I'm very passionate about. So I'm all on board with that thematically. I think that it was horrible that they defaced it with, with the graffiti that they, they put on there, and I think that that's completely wrong. But having said that, I think that approving a variance in this case would represent a precedent that I don't think is in the best interest of the city to, to kind of change, change the rules midstream in, in terms of this variance. So that's just, again, it's, it's not about how I feel about the mural or how I feel about educators, my being one. But I feel that I'm leaning towards affirming the recommendation of the Board of Adjustment and, and the denying the UTD's appeal.
Okay, and, and was there something
Yes.
that a city attorney wanted to clarify?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't call for a variance.
I, well, that's what, I think that's what you wanted to say. It's not a variance, right?
This is not a variance, which is what typically the Board of Adjustment hears. This is not a variance. This is an interpretation made by the planning official on the application of the zoning ordinance. So it's an appeal from the zoning, planning officials' interpretation of the code. And that went to the Board of Adjustment, and it's here before the City Council for a final decision.
And so I think what I'm hearing is that, and I'll let you just speak in a moment, is that perhaps someone on the council will make a motion for one of two things. One is to affirm the decision of the Board of Adjustment of our residents that I want to remind everyone, those are residents that sit here, you know, and act to act as, as a go-between. So it's not just everything we're deciding it. It's residents that give their time to, to listen to these issues and, and give their recommendations. Or the other possibility is that we vote to extend this to a hearing, which would then be the last Wednesday of this month. Is that correct, counselor?
Correct.
That possibly that's what we're looking at is for a motion.
Yes.
From our city council members on one or the other.
Like to make a motion.
Okay. Motion to.
In a hearing, right? That option, I don't know how to word it, right?
Okay.
You defer to a hearing.
I defer to a hearing, yes, on this matter, so we can flesh this out further.
You got a second, Mayor?
All right. Any discussion? All right. Should, and I'm not sure how to do this. You're representing U T D?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I guess we'll take a vote on this and then we can hear from you later, but we'll hear later if this motion carries at the hearing anyway. So let's do that. All right. So call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo? On this is to defer to a hearing. No.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Fajat?
I'm open to a hearing, yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, so this will be deferred to a hearing and it'll be on the first Wednesday.
The last Wednesday.
Excuse me, the last Wednesday of this month, which is.
March 30th, I believe.
March 30th. Okay, and that will give us all more time. Now, did you want to go ahead?
That took care of my request, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the record, Javier Fernandez, on behalf of U T D, and we'll see you on the 30th. Have a good evening.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I think that will allow all of us to consider it. I know I gotten a lot of calls and input from residents who, some of them are teachers and, you know, are for it. And a lot of other residents, you know, have big concerns about, you know, why we're allowing one thing, but not allowing it with other businesses. So I think we all need, like Councilman Fajat said, I mean, Councilman Vasquez said, you know, we need to look at this a little more. The reason that it hasn't come before us before is because it's been going through the process of code enforcement, requesting the permit. It's the right, the, the proper process. And then again, using our Board of Adjustment residents who sit as an advisory board. And then it eventually comes to us. So this is the process for something that of this nature. Yes, sir.
Through the chair, Mayor, if I, if I might state here, this in no way, in my view, I mean, we were faced with a tough choice here. We, we fortunately, according to, to legal, had the option tonight to do something. Adjustment did not. So in, in doing what we have, have, have taken the decision to do tonight, in no way speaks down to the Board of Adjustment and what they had to look at when they saw the legislation in front of them. I want that perfectly clear because they did the right thing. It's nice to be the city council, maybe, and you can have these, these opportunities to do things going forward. And I think we did the right thing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I just want to re, uh, reassert, reassert not only what Councilman Best is saying, but I, by recognizing the efforts of our volunteers and these boards and commissions. And, and it's structured in that manner that they did their due diligence according to the way they saw things and their purview and their charge as boards. But, but I, I appreciate the support to, for us to do our due diligence and give everyone opportunity and for folks who can, who are coming before that hearing, depending on what the rules are for participation, but.
Now, to our city attorney at this hearing, we can again affirm what the Board of Adjustment has recommended to us.
Yes, that would be a final hearing.
Right. So it's not that we're, all we're saying is we're delaying it to a hearing and to give it, give us, my understanding is to give it us more time to consider the recommendation and the recommend, you know, and the input from the community. But at that meeting, we can still affirm the Board of Adjustments' recommendation to deny.
Correct. It's, it's a hearing technically before the Board of Appeals, but it's still quasi judicial. So the decision as to whether to, it's a public hearing, but whether or not you want to entertain comments from the public is up to you.
Okay, okay. But the, the, I want to just clarify that my understanding is the Board of Adjustment recommendation still stands. It hasn't been solved. It's, we're just giving it more, a little more time to digest the input from the community.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and/or we could decide differently, I would think.
Well, that would be not to affirm the Board of Adjustment recommendation.
Yes. So we have, we have options as, as a body.
Okay. So, all right, we'll move along.
There we go.
To the next agenda item.
So, William. It'll be.
Okay, agenda item eight, public hearings. We have none, so we move to agenda item. If you please, everyone that's, excuse me, could you keep your voices down? We're still in the meeting. Thank you. All right. Agenda item nine, consent agenda.
This is a recommendation by recreation that council waived the competitive bid process in the best interest of the city and approve an expenditure to Trident Surfacing Inc. in an amount not to exceed $43,500 for emergency repairs to replace a portion in order to prevent any further damages of the existing gymnasium wood floor, sand and seal it to match existing after discovering subterranean termite damages as funds were not budgeted in the fiscal year 2122 budget and will need to come from the city's reserve and pursuant to section 31 E 6 G of the city code, which requires a forfeits majority vote by council. So we have before you here a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, approving the purchase of repairs for the city's gymnasium's wooden floor from Trident Surfacing Inc. in an amount not to exceed $43,500, providing for a waiver of competitive bidding, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
Through the chair.
Okay. And since this is consent agenda, let's, unless somebody wanted to read them out.
So we could do one motion?
We can do, unless you wanted to, did you want to speak on one specifically?
No, 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 no. I was just wondering if we were going to do A or B or A and B.
A and B.
We're doing both.
This is a recommendation by police department that council waived the competitive bid process in the best interest of the city, mainly due to the fact that they are the only local vendor in Miami Dade County to provide police uniforms and approve an expenditure to lose police distributors not to exceed $25,000 for police uniforms as funds were approved in the fiscal year 2122 budget pursuant to section 31 E 6 G of the city code. Before you tonight, you have resolution nine B. This is a resolution of mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, approving the purchase of the police uniforms from lose police distributors in an amount not to exceed $25,000, providing for a waiver of competitive bidding, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
Through the chair, motion to approve resolutions nine A and B.
Second.
Okay, call the vote, please. Any discussion? Sorry. Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Fajat?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item 10, old business, we have none. Under new business, agenda item 11, we have another resolution.
There's a resolution of the city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, providing for the second amendment to the fiscal year 2122 general fund and enterprise fund budget and providing for an effective date. It's just a housekeeping measure. If you'll notice on your exhibit for the budget amendments, these are items that have already been approved by council.
Through the chair, motion to move 11 A.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Fajat?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item 12, other business, a vote of confidence for our city clerk is required by our section of the city charter.
And on a later note.
I vote yes.
No words of wisdom from the professor down there?
Listen, hey, let me think about it for a second. No, I'm, I'm absolutely, you know, I have the greatest admiration for our clerk, our manager, all the staff. You know, I'm going to vote yes on all of them. So you have my vote of confidence for sure.
Okay. Councilman, Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor?
Let me think. Yes. You do have my vote of confidence. Thank you for always being there, answering emails. You're very prompt, very organized. And if I have any clerical questions, you're there. So thank you.
Thank you.
I get tired of saying this, but over and above, hands down, vote of confidence from this, from this seat. Again, she goes over and above to make sure each and every one of us are properly briefed on city issues. Very timely in that fashion, I might add. We don't get the information 24 hours from the time it happens. We get it like when it happens. And, and I certainly thank you for that, for keeping all of us in the loop. You got my vote of confidence.
Thank you.
Councilman Fajat, is there anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, I wholeheartedly convey my vote of confidence for Erica and the city clerk staff.
You might have got a couple votes.
I just wanted to say, Erica, you and Juan and Sandra do a fantastic job. Your office is always just so helpful and very organized too, and very prompt in responding, taking care of the things that I asked for. So do we need to take a formal vote?
I need a motion.
Okay.
Motion to move the item, please.
I'll second.
All right. Any more discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Fajat?
We lost him.
No, he's there.
He's there.
Walter. Yes. Yes. Sorry. Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
And carries.
Okay. Item 11, excuse me, 12 B, vote of confidence for the city attorney as required by the city charter. And there again, I vote yes on it. I, I feel, I mean, there's just, and I'm sure everyone in the council feels the same way. There's no way that we are worth anything without, you know, the, the support, the knowledge, the guidance, the expertise, the background that our staff has and our city attorney office for sure. There's so many issues that, you know, we would always, I, I'm sure all of you are the same as me, you know, there's things we want to do. And why shouldn't we be able to do like this? And in talking to our city attorney, they kind of tone it down as to, you know, this isn't allowed because of this, or this would be illegal, or this is a nice thought, but, you know, and, and just help us formulate something that is in the best interest of our community, that makes what we'd like to do, you know, the, the projects that we'd like to move forward or the issues that we'd like to tackle, you know, presentable in a way that, that can be done. And that's, takes a great, great deal of, of knowledge, of expertise, of legal. Being an attorney, I guess, a city attorney. So thank you, Heidi, your firm.
Oh, but I will relay everything. She gets all the credit.
So Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Yes. Is there anything anyone wants to add?
I, yeah, I might. I'll second it before doing so. You know, you ever think about how lawyers work and, you know, this and that, but when this city started back in 1926, the law, the, the code of ordinance were, was zero. You know what it is now? Six inches thick. And that just goes to show the testament of how these guys have to review this stuff and then applies Florida statute to it. County ordinances were, were appropriate and, and how it all comes together. And, you know, you can, you can have your opinion on this or that and yea or nay or any of that, but then come the lawyers. And they certainly, this firm keeps us well in tune with what our options are. And that's all we can ask of a legal team and they do a tremendous job at it. Haiti, Jose and Ed, the other lawyer that we have. Eric. The whole team, the whole team.
Just so many issues.
Just incredible. Thank you so much.
Residents realize how many issues, you know, we have to consult individually with the city attorney to get a bearing on, on what's possible. Vice Mayor?
No, I just wanted to extend my gratitude to your firm, to you, Jose, to Heidi. I, I know I probably drive her crazy many, many times, but I do it for the reason of, to come up here and serve to the best of my abilities. And I can do that because of your guidance. So you do have my vote of confidence.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I just want to echo the work of Jose and Heidi and the whole group. I know I've called them on occasions and, you know, and if, if I didn't get someone, they call right away. So, you know, not that they had to be there every moment of the day because I know they do represent other cities, but I'm very satisfied. And you, you guys got my vote of confidence and I'm, and I'm really glad we got you guys. Really appreciate it.
Councilman Fajat?
Yes, I, again, I convey my vote of confidence for Heidi and the team at Y Sirota.
Okay. Is there a motion?
You're first and a second.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Fajat?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so now we move to agenda item 12D, which is a request by our vice mayor to discuss the residential color palette.
All right, so, um, you got my memorandums on here. Okay, so I'm not going to read through this. I think that you guys have read it. I just want to create some sort of tool where we can see how things get out of proportion when we don't have an ordinance in place and now dealing with the U T D matter. I just don't want to see this starting to transpire within our neighborhoods. I'm not here to control to the extremity of specific colors. I really am just trying to differ from colors that can cause us as homeowners a potential loss of value or resale. An example, if I get a person that I'm lucky, I mean, my neighbor, my whole block is great, but there might be someone that consequently a neighbor paints their house neon green or neon blue, or you have fuchsia. And I provided some images and those are some images that are already coming to the city. And I mean, I've been here a long, long time. I can tell you overall, people have good taste. They most, you know, they like to take care of their homes. I just want to kind of create some sort of tool because no one to say that someone would draw a mural on their house and we don't have an ordinance. So I'm trying to be proactive in the sense and jump on the bandwagon. Again, this is not to micromanage. This is just to, you know, just to have something in place where a, a resident has leverage to say, hey, out of the 10 colors, you're not supposed to paint your house. This person's painting a house and it becomes a problem. If I'm going to go ahead and sell my house and I have a fuchsia house next to me, I may, a lot of buyers are probably not going to buy my house because I have a purple house next to me and, and it'll affect the value of my home. So instead of selling for 750,000 and myself for 650, I'm just throwing it out there because I would like to recommend for the Board of Architect, our architectural review board, which we haven't used them in quite some time, to take a look at this and see what we can put together. There's many, many cities that have color palettes or color pattern themes or very broad spectrums where you can, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of colors. So if you don't find something within those hundreds and hundreds of colors, then you're most likely that person that's going to paint your house purple or fuchsia or neon green or something to that caliber. So I'm just bringing proactive, you know, to, to preserve our city, to preserve the beautifulness. There are some areas in the city that those, maybe those types of colors in particular to, to public art and stuff that would be more appropriate. But I don't think I can see this becoming an issue in the near future. And we're not going to have our, an argument. We're not going to have something to, to help us make better decisions. And I don't want to work backwards again. So if somebody, you know, down the block decides to put a pictorial, a person on their house, what am I to do? Or they want to paint half of their house green and half of their house purple, what am I to do? Again, your creation, your imagination is limitless. And a lot of people use color perhaps for a form of expression to show maybe aggressivity or just to cause attention. But it does cause, it causes a little bit of trouble when you're just trying to promote a, a good. when you're just trying to promote, uh, a good quality of life. Um, I, I put down some colors. Listen, I love blues. I'm for blues. It's just certain shades of blue, certain shades of green. We can depict those. I've seen many blue houses that are beautiful. I love the, you know, they put even accents. They'll put like the blue, and then they'll do the white. People get creative, and they do it nicely. I don't have a problem with that. But when you start seeing, uh, these awkward colors, and then most of the houses turn to be run down, I, I, you know, that's a code compliance issue. We can address the rundown issue, but we have nothing to, to leverage on, on, on that type of, uh, topic. So, I'm just learning now from U T D. I'm just trying to be proactive. And, um, I just, you know, if you guys want to bring anything to the table, I know we received, I, I received an email from an attorney, and he was just like all worked up, but, I'm not going to get scared away from this. This is a very common practice. I'm going to work, uh, I would like to work with our attorneys to see what leverage we have. Again, this is not to micromanage our neighborhood. I like the diversity. I like the differences in the homes. I mean, if I didn't, then I'd live in an HOA community. I don't like that. But what I don't like is that people are coming up, we're giving awards for their yards. They're really beautiful. People are making their maximum efforts to, to do. It doesn't have to be perfect. Just cut grass. Everything's maintained. It doesn't have to be to the extremity. But it, it's just, it's becoming a little bit more common, and then they're going to jump on the bandwagon with the U T D, and then maybe, you know, some people might get angry based on their decisions, and then you're going to start seeing funky colors go on their houses, and then now we're going to have a little bit of murals, maybe some polka dots. I'm just being proactive. It wasn't to cause an alarm and alert. And, um, hopefully to get your feedback, to kind of put this together and see what you guys think, because this is, I know it was addressed many moons ago, but I think it's, uh, to be adjusted again, considering the circumstance that we're up against, which is a very uncomfortable thing to be in.
Councilman?
I think, uh, again, as I said earlier, under 7A, I'm not here to adjudge the arts. And I do recognize, uh, Vice Mayor, that your, your, your issue speaks specifically to residential housing and not to different, different, uh, zoning, um, areas in the city. Relative to this, again, I, I really, I really, again, what's happening here is, is this whole palette thing, which, which really raised its ugly head about six or seven years ago, when we were going through all this, and, and, and created this. And it's biting us now. It's biting us. I don't want to be like Davey, where everything looks the same. There's a theme. Uh, that, that's a failure waiting to happen. Miami Lakes, what they tried to do there, that's a failure waiting to happen. It's already failed. Several other places in Dade County, this is, this has occurred. Um, I think the new, the new tide, the new trend is to express yourself in, in, in where your domicile is, where you put your money, where you raise your family. You know, um, and, and, and I am not for one to take that, that decision-making process away from any taxpayer or homeowner in this, in this town. I think by, by virtue of default, the term was a convenient term that was used earlier in discussion tonight. Um, if somebody were to do something as egregious as to paint their house in suggestive fashion, as you mentioned, um, I think the neighbors would come to the rescue on that one. I don't think you need City Hall to get involved. What should you do? Should, because one or two people might not agree with it. It becomes grounds for legislation.
But what if you walk out and you see something that disturbs you on a personal level, or it's against your religious beliefs, or something, you know, you start getting technical?
This is always going to have, this, this will, this will always occur. This is always going to occur.
Also, let's clarify, you're saying personal, and, you know, something written that disturbs you, that those are murals, right? So, I think there's two things here. From my understanding, to clarify, one is that you don't want to see murals on homes or on fences. I mean, I certainly don't want, you know, my, the corner fence to have no matter. And we've had residents, I know, since I've been on the council, residents reach out to me, which is why it's surprising U T D wouldn't, you know, go through, reach out and say, um, you know, oh, I, my fence on the side of my house, I'm on a corner, and it's, you know, it's not in great condition. I would like to paint it, but I like to put like flowers on it or something. Is that okay? Make a day, like a daisy, you know? And when I've asked in the city, I've been told, no, we don't allow that, you know? So, I've told the residents, you know, when they've asked these kinds of things, and they've all said, okay, good, you know, all right, then we'll just repaint it or something. Um, so I think you're talking about two different things. One is house colors, which is what you've brought here, and the other one is murals and signs and, right? Of, well, no, but I think she's, she's mentioned this. I, I just want to say, I, I want to clarify, are you talking just about house colors, or are you talking about not allowing murals on homes?
About house colors and then experimental, um, items with murals. I didn't put the word murals. I was just wanting to casually express it on the dais. I didn't put it on the agenda forum, but one thing will lead to the other, I believe, because it's about creativity. So, I just want to, again, to the Architectural Review Board, because I for one, I didn't come to Miami Springs, or, 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 or buy in Miami Springs because of its, um, creativity of house colors or anything like that. I mean, I think there's certain demographics in certain areas where you can buy in if you're looking for that type of atmosphere and environment. Um, and it will, I mean, I'm in the real estate industry. I can tell you that, I can tell you what a lot of buyers want to see and what a lot of buyers don't want to see. So, if you want to make your city a little bit less desirable to the, to the more general public audience, or, or I mean, or, or buyer, uh, population, then yes, let these things transpire throughout the city. But you're going to have that population in Miami Springs that will eventually move out. And then this will just, with time, just say, you know, nature takes over buildings if you let it go, uh, the colors as well.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, and I'd like to ask our attorney, um, an opinion on this, because, um, fortunately, I've painted my house twice since I've been here, um, the color that my wife wanted. Unfortunately, they were nice colors to the, had no issues whatsoever. However, I, I, uh, like many of you, I got, uh, six or seven emails of people complaining, and why are you going to tell us how to paint the house, or whatever, whatever. Yeah, on this issue. And so, uh, my question is though, and I, and I appreciate, uh, um, the Vice Mayor bringing this issue. I appreciate, as he brings issues that we need to debate and consider. Um, and, and, and so, several of you, I think, you know, Bob, you mentioned it, Councilman Best, that you know, people own a home, and they have certain rights and privileges, right? I, i- is this something that you're, you've come up with, uh, uh, the, the, the making ordinances about what colors you could paint your house, or the restrictions of it? I know that in HOAs and all the, you know, they're very specific about it. And, and by the way, I agree with, uh, Councilman Best. I mean, when I moved to Miami Springs, um, I moved here because of the kind of environment there was, and I didn't notice until I moved that every house on my block is different structurally. And, and, and I became aware at that time from my neighbor across the street, uh, who's been here forever, that, you know, that, back in the day, people would just buy the plot and build a house that they wanted. So, I like the idea that the houses look different. They're not cookie cutter. But, uh, uh, you know, so I wanted to ask the attorney if he had some thoughts on this, because I really don't know which way to go here.
What's, what's the question?
Well, the, the idea of, of, Vice Mayor Bravo suggested that we might have the Architectural Review Commission take a look at the issue of colors, because we do have a variety of colors. She sent us some, and I've seen a couple of those houses. And really, they're, uh, you know, it's quite a broad spectrum of colors. I use that word loosely.
Yeah. It's a policy-based decision. So, that, some cities adopt that type of, uh, code ordinance, uh, and some don't. Uh, it, you know, this is, uh, at, at this, at this stage, it's really just a policy consideration. So, it's not so much a legal matter at this time.
So, William, is the, the palette that we, was, was debated, you know, on the commissions and so forth regarding the mural, is that the same palette that applies to homeowners?
No.
I didn't think so.
We only have a color palette for commercial.
Commercial. We don't have a color palette for house, for residential.
We have nothing for it.
Okay. All right. So.
And, and, and as Jose said, it's a, uh, there are some cities that have color palettes, uh, Key Biscayne, Coral Gables, even West Miami. But then you have other cities, which I was surprised, like Pine Crest doesn't have a color palette. There are many other cities that don't have them. So, it's, it's a policy decision.
To, to the chair. And I also mentioned here, it was a, um, it was to adopt a no-fee certificate of approval, meaning it doesn't cost any homeowner anything to get consensus from the city, because I don't want to be a blockage or a, a barrier from people, you know, beautifying their homes. That, that's not the intention. Maybe the ordinance could be vague and say, well, um, I know, you know, Resident Ordinance does not allow for murals specifically, because that we can't put, and, um, you know, or loud, or uncommon, unfavorable colors, and leave it up to our building and planning to decide whether that would be okay. I mean, it doesn't have to be a color palette. I'm just trying to protect the appearance and curb appeal of the city, because.
Can I tell you, this is, um, and, and I'm just going to give some of my thoughts on it. One of them is, and I'm not sure what your intent is on this. Are you saying if, um, say right now, you showed this picture of a pink house, if we were to adopt the color palette, or even say not a garish color, and this is considered garish, are you saying that the homeowner has to repaint the house?
No. So.
When they go to paint it?
Good question.
So, that, you're saying when they go to paint it, they can't paint it pink again?
Right. Well, I mean, those technicalities, they, you know, the attorney can formally, I know they did some vesting verbiage for, um, what was that ordinance that they put together? I can't remember right now. I think it was actually for, it was an ordinance there, but there's some vesting matters. So, for example, if, um, they give them an ultimatum of seven years, I'm not even going to give you an ultimatum. Let it just be pink. And then if they have to do major repairs, that's, uh, 50% more repairs on their house, that causes them that they have to repaint, then maybe if you have to paint more than 50% of your house, then you would have to go ahead and, uh, you know, paint the whole house again. I'm not saying we're going to go out there and make them repaint their house.
Okay. So, this is, this would be.
Stop the leak.
This would be one of my concerns, is that if I had a house and I need to do repairs on it, the only thing I'm not going to do is repaint it, because if I have to, you know, it, I, I would have to repaint, like, for instance, my house, we repaint it every single time the same color. And the reason for that is it's so much easier. There's, you don't prime it, you don't. So, every single time we repaint this house and every house we've had, we repaint it the same color. So, what I can foresee happening with some of these houses is my house needs painting. I'm not repainting it, because I would paint it the same color, and they're not going to let me do that. So, so perhaps what we might have, and these are just thoughts I'm putting out, let, you know, let me finish. These, what may happen is that we have houses that need maintenance, that are in need of paint, and they're not getting repainted, because I'm not going to repaint it. They won't let me paint it the color I want to paint it, and I'm not going to repaint it, you know, one of these other colors. So, then down the road, what we're going to have is that issue of, you know, it's a maintenance thing, yeah, but if you want me to paint my house, I'm going to paint it the same color I have on there. The other thing is with these that you showed, these, these pictures that you showed, um, and some of them are more maintenance. It's not the color, I think, is the problem, is the house is an older house. We have a lot of older houses, and the maintenance issue is what makes it look ugly. But personally, from the, the photos that you showed here of these houses, Councilwoman, the only, there's only one that I find, what I guess would be.
Is that my house?
Or, or whatever. The other ones, I find.
Category. I could have just walked.
I, I find pleasing, you know, like I like soft blues on homes and soft aquas on homes. And, um, these homes that are the kind of orange stucco, that's a very cultural, you know, Latin American type of, that's, you know, uh, kind of, so, so, all of these, with the exception of one, for me, subjectively, if I was judging, I would only have one that I would say, you know what? This is questionable. Whereas you have, you know, I don't know how many, somebody else. So, so the diff, and the reason I'm bringing this up is that I just find the difficulty in a new development. And when we first bought, before we moved to Miami Springs, we bought in brand-new development in Kendall in the eighties, when they were building new developments. And, um, it was a brand-new house, and we got to pick the colors. We got to pick everything. And there were probably, I don't know, six colors that you could paint your house on the outside. And we picked one of them. I was perfectly happy. All the houses looked the same. It was that time when the houses had the tan with the wood trim, and, you know, and all the houses looked pretty much the same, but, but it fit that neighborhood, because the, the models of the homes were very similar. You know, there was probably six models you could choose from. And as you walk through, in Miami Springs, we've got a city where obviously the homes started being built in the 1920s, and along the style of the homes are very different. I, the subjectiveness, I, I like what you're saying of trying to make something that, especially with murals, or with signs, or with outlandish statements that you go, oh, my God, everyone that passes by is like, you know, but I'm not sure that a color palette is it. So, I guess what I'm saying is it merits more looking into, into something that is just less subjective as to what would be interpreted. Um, also, if somebody paints their house, you know, a color, and they say, but this is a blue, but it's a soft blue hue. I mean, if you've been to Lowe's or Home Depot or anything, you know that there are thousands of colors in blue, and it could say the name of the, of the color could be sky blue, and it's still, you know, this color, or it could be a very pale color. So, um, I, I, I commend you for the thought that you have of just trying to make our neighborhood look nicer. And I agree that there has to be, you know, perhaps there's some way that we can accomplish that. Um, I don't know if it's suggested color palette, but, you know, and make those suggestions, but also, um, the maintenance. A lot of these are, you know, the homes, uh, if they were maintained properly, or even painted, in good condition, they probably, um, may not, you may not notice it, or, or, but I, I'm just surprised with so many of these that I would go by, and I would have absolutely no thought as to it being garish. I mean, this is a more maintenance issue of an older house.
To the chair. I understand. I don't want a color palette. What I just want is some sort of leverage where, you know, we just have an absurd color. I mean, I'm going to be honest. I'm not going to sit here in sugarcoat stuff, because people buy houses, because it's an investment to their pocket, right? I mean, that's clear to say. Um, but in respects to the colors, I like blues. I like, but it's, it, there's so many pretty shades of blue. There's so many pretty shades of green. It's going to be harder to do a color palette. I don't care for a color palette. I just want, you can't paint your house certain colors, black, red, but like the sharp, like, maybe we could just loosen the verbiage, and it doesn't have to be so specific, but somewhere where, you know, we have some sort of leverage, because I would hate to, me personally, as a resident, I, I take care of our homes. Most of us take, all of us have, have nice homes, to have this next to me. And then if I have to sell, it's just, it's just, it, it's uneasy. And I just, I'm trying to look for now, because I, a lot of people expressed to me, many people voted for me, have expressed this from day one, and I did not feel comfortable bringing this, even though I, I maybe reasoned with them. I did not feel comfortable at that time. I, I, I thought that this would present itself at a more, a better time. And having the experience with U T D, I'm just a little, you know, on the fence.
And I can tell you, I think, I, and I think the other council, because I noticed a lot of emails were addressed to all of us, but they didn't email you, because I guess perhaps you were, but I know I've gotten a slew of emails this week and calls, right, of being very concerned about the color palette. So, you know, that residents don't want to. I, I don't, I haven't had one where, you know, they've said they're in, in favor of that. They're all very concerned about, you know, the city dictating to them what's a pretty color for their house. So, what I'm, my suggestion is I see, I, I fully, I think I fully understand, you know, what your intentions are with this of just beautifying our neighborhood, and perhaps there's some other way to look at it, that it's not a color palette that, first of all, we have to enforce. And, and if we, we've talked about putting, adding a new code enforcement, um, officer on this next city's budget, there's no way our two code enforcement officers, God bless their souls, can do the work that is required of them. Um, and a lot of the problems with the homes, what I see is not, uh, it's, it's just maintenance, you know? They need to be spiffed up a little bit. They need to, to have a little more care given to them, and, um, we're extremely tolerant of conditions. And, and, and tends to be if a neighbor complains, then that's when. then that's when our poor code enforcement officers can get there because the rest of the time they just don't have the time to, you know, to, um, go around the neighborhoods just looking for violations. So my suggestion would be if you give it a little more thought as to something that's not so subjective and how we can promote the, and definitely murals, I, I, I don't wanna go there like you of all of a sudden having a homeowner say, there's nothing specifically that said, you know, I couldn't have a mural or a sign. Um, you know, costs, pardon me.
Residential is not the district for that.
Yeah, but you know, of, of coming up, making it clear that that's not allowed because it can, the same thing has happened with U T D, then they do it and then they wanna know. You know, we're backtracking and we're saying it's not allowed, um, but you know, they've already done it and, um, taking up, you know, a lot of, of, um, time, of staff time and, you know, city council time and everything and, and advisory board backtracking to something that, um, probably we need to clarify right now. And I think that's a great idea.
I, 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 I would, I'd, I'd like to applaud the vice mayor for bringing this item, not for how it sits on paper, but just because of her background in real estate. Nobody in their right mind is gonna want to downgrade their property by pinning it a ridiculous color and then try to sell the property. Clearly, that's had to be paramount on her mind to even consider this. Um, and I agree, and I totally agree. Uh, to, to paint your, to paint your house as some egregious color and then expect to sell it.
You, a, a neighbor.
No, 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 I'm saying, in, in, in general, in general. Um, I think, I think we are best served at the moment with what we have, which is no palette. You know, usually sometimes when you don't legislate something, it, it, it either goes away or it finds a way to just.
Get in.
Or finds a way to get in. And if it does, then, then, then we address it, but that, I don't think evidence dictates that at the moment relative to what we have in Miami Springs. But I appreciate your thoughts though on it. I, you bet. Commercial is another matter.
To the chair, is this something that could be, um, deferred regardless to the architectural review board for reviewing? Haven't used them and they're just, you know, I'm sure that they're eager to do something.
And, and they may, um, it, it's a good idea because they may come up with, you know, some sort of of recommendation of something that's not a color palette, but some way to, um, to provide some sort. I mean, we all want our neighborhoods to look nice. It's just, you know, what looks good, even with style, you notice that with styles, you know, and everything, everyone has different styles and what someone thinks is a really nice, modern style, you may be like, ooh, you know.
Yeah. And the stucco style, Sue Curtis, I like to see that, that, that orange, that rich color, because it, it favors that type of architecture. It brings.
So, and if nothing more, maybe the architectural review board can give us suggestions on, you know, some wording that would be easy to interpret, but also, um, suggested recommendations on color palettes that work best for selling, you know, for making your house look the best, having the best curb appeal. You, you know, and I don't know. Improvement in property value.
Yeah, they haven't had anything to talk about for a while. Give it, give it to them. Let them play with it.
And I think that would, and we also have something coming that we've talked about putting in front of them. What is that?
The architectural review?
Oh, the entrance signs?
The entrance signs.
No, the entrance signs is a historical preservation board. Once they decide on, or they give recommendations on how the sign should be for welcome to Miami Springs or Miami Springs, then we would ask the parks board where to place them. Eric Ritchie, where, where the sign should be placed, but the historical preservation board would be the ones that give us recommendations on the, the pueblo mission style that you suggested, that vice mayor, um, Bravo suggests, well, for the welcome to Miami Springs signs. You know, that you suggested that should, that would.
Could have a piece to that too, mayor, I think. Architectural could have a piece of that too. I mean, they could, it wouldn't hurt to have them look at that either.
Sure.
Yeah, the aesthetic value, yeah.
But I think we should do one board, then the next another, not both of them. So we already said the historical preservation board, because they have an idea of what is pueblo mission style. Um, and they have a lot of historical and photos and things of what was used at the time. So, and once they make our recommendation, then we can decide whether to pass it to the architectural or to straight to, um, the parks board for location. Okay, so Eric, could you?
Coordinate with the board to review the.
And, and you know, not color palette, I guess, I don't know how you wanna word it of recommendation of.
A recommendation for residential, um, color review or, I don't know how you wanna word it. I mean, they can look at the memorandum and take it however they wish to proceed with it.
I wanna make sure, I don't want them to spend their time coming up with a color palette and then we say that's not what we want. So perhaps, um, y'all can work on it later of, of.
Specific.
I put here in a suggestion, it says, I would like to direct our architectural review board to provide some color policies for exterior residential color palette and provide suggestions. So I would just want them to provide suggestions and the residential for residential areas.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't have to be so specific, but I'm just curious to see what they.
Sure.
And you could work with. wording.
And I know, like one thing, um, dark homes lately have, you know, I've noticed a lot of the newer homes that, not newer homes, homes that have been renovated by young professionals have very dark, um, dark windows and dark, you know, like very grays and browns and stuff, which I would have never thought of doing that. But when you look at it, it looks really like, it looks really nice. It looks really, right. And it's and it's a color that I would never think, you know, would be on the wall of a house. It's so, so dark.
Would fly in my.
Wouldn't fly. I like, like things too, but you know, okay. All right. So does that sound good? All right. So then let's do, um, item E, appointment of representative and alternate to the Miami Day League of Cities and Councilman Behet, you're right now the.
Yeah, and I was gonna ask mayor, mayor, I was gonna ask if I could remain, uh, the appointed representative because during COVID, the Miami Day League of Cities didn't really get to meet. We've only really had two in-person meetings. And so, uh, if, if it, uh, if the members of the council wouldn't mind, I would love to, uh, to remain the representative for one more term so that I could represent the city because they, they really weren't as active during COVID, uh, when they didn't need, it was only via Zoom and it was in the middle of the day, very different from what, uh, their normal course of business.
Okay, and Councilman Behet, you're the alternate, I mean, Vasquez, you're the alternate.
Really for the same reason.
Do we need a vote on that, Eric? Or we just?
No, I don't think so.
Is that?
Laissez faire, as they say in French, leave it the way it is.
Yeah, the only thing is I asked the, was it the executive director? I was at another meeting and they were both there, the executive director and the president. If I could be included in the invitations, I haven't seen any invitations. Uh, but then again, they've all been in Zoom. But anyway, yes, I'd like to, you know, now that we're moving into a little bit of.
And I just wanna mention, you know, with the League of Cities, even though Councilman Behet is are designated representative and you're alternate and I'm on the coalition of mayors for the League of Cities. Um, we're all invited to all the event, you know, to all the, yes. So perhaps you can go to any of the board of directors meetings that are, um, they rotate them every month. We had one in City Miami Springs recently and then um, every single month it's rotated and a new lo- location and new city hosted. So perhaps Erica, if you could make sure to distribute the monthly invites to all the council members, because everyone is, um, certainly attend. And it's great to attend because it's how you meet people from, you know, elected officials from other communities and get that kind of, you know, um, networking and communication and share ideas and.
The one that we just had in Miami Springs, half of those people had to have been in Tallahassee with you like just a week before.
And since because of sunshine, we can't talk to each other. Uh, you know, things, it's really a helpful way for you to talk to other elected officials in South Florida and get information about. About issues that you may be interested in. Okay, so let's see, um.
City attorney.
Yep, we're, okay, great. We're at reports and recommendations. City Attorney Jose.
My only comment would be that, uh, so the vote was taken on the U T D matter to defer it. Um, it's garnered, uh, some media attention. So until the final hearing is made, correct, I would ask, uh, the council remained, uh, silent until a final decision is made. Um, so.
You have someone from Channel fifty-one signaling.
Uh, the chief was telling me that they're set up outside and they've been interviewing some of the people that were in here. So they might be outside waiting for.
It will. You will be sitting as the board of appeals at that hearing. So this is.
Because we're gonna be, we're gonna be hearing.
Correct.
So it's like asking a jury or a judge that, you know, to make a comment.
Correct.
Thank you for that reminder. Um, okay, uh, city manager.
Yeah, um, talking about code enforcement officers and how overworked they are. Um, over the weekend, our code enforcement officers did a great job and we have, uh, remember I told you we had four licensed short-term vacation rentals in the city? They, uh, found sixteen operating without a license. They were able to track them to, uh, uh, the website. So they started the process today of issuing fines. Uh, they did eight of them today. They're gonna do eight of them tomorrow. There's a lot of paperwork involved. And that was just in the, this area of town. Now they're gonna start working on the east side of town, which I'm sure we'll find some, some more there, but just over the week, they did a great job of really tying it. And that's why we posted on the city website today, because a lot of people that do these short-term rentals don't understand that they, if, and, and by the, by the way, fourteen of these properties are homesteaded properties. So you can lose your homestead. If you rent your house thirty days for two consecutive calendar years, you lose your homestead and you lose, you save our homes. Plus, there's all kinds of penalties that go on top of that. I think it's a fifty percent penalty of, of the taxes due and all that. So, uh, so we, we, we found sixteen. I'm sure there's probably a lot more out there. I just wanted to let you know.
William, and, and we're letting the homeowners know that they're, that they're homesteading, the homestead, um, exemption is, you know, at risk.
We posted it on the site today on all our, uh, media sites so that, uh, uh, they're aware of it. Plus, we also told them that, you know, they need a city license or they're gonna be fined two hundred and fifty dollars for a first offense, five hundred for a second offense. Um, so we're working on that.
That's wonderful. That's good because I know we all get complaints from residents as to, you know, um, if, uh, property next to them or in, on their block is being used as a short-term vacation rental. And what they see is, you know, a constant flow of, of cars and people coming in and out and, um, uh, you know, and even though the, the owners a, a lot of times are, are doing a really good job of trying to make sure that there's no, um, you know, wild parties or stuff going on, um, you know, the residents are concerned.
Right now is we have a lot of people that, uh, for, as a matter of fact, one of the people that we, uh, cited today, uh, actually lives outside the country. And just had that home, bought that home here and was renting it out. And he just happened to be there when our officers showed up. So, uh, I think there's a lot of that going around. And, um, uh, building department tells me that a lot of realtors, when they call about a particular property, first question they ask, does the city allow Airbnb or rental, short-term rent?
They're asking.
And as someone who has rented, a lot of Airbnbs are family rents them a lot, you know, um, to go skiing and to go to the beach and and all these things are wonderful. Um, but you know, they have to be in communities where, uh, when we rent, it's communities where and basically every single house on that block is an Airbnb. That's, you know, the community is a vacation community and, and, um, you know, and they're, um, kind of designed to be like that, even though they're individually owned. Um, okay, so let's go with, um, anything else, um, William?
No, there, um, I think I may have some remarks for you.
Yes, uh, just a quick reminder of a few events. So the Florida Department of Health is still administering the flu shots Monday through Friday from nine to four at the Miami Springs Athletic Center. For anybody, um, wants the flu shot ages eighteen and older. Um, also, we still have those homebound, um, the COVID testing and the, uh, vaccine, vaccines, which is also on our social media sites. Um, also, um, Shannon is doing a spring story. She, uh, sent out her first, uh, spring story edition. This, this, uh, last couple of days. And each month she wants to co- showcase a new story of a family, um, who has some history or has a brief, story to tell about, uh, their family history here in Miami Springs. So if you have any, uh, information or you wanna be a part of that project, please contact her at publicinfo@miamisprings-fl.gov. The Parks and Recreation Department is hosting a Easter egg drop. Uh, you have to register for your home to be entered into this annual event. Um, Easter morning, uh, they will drop off hidden eggs in the front of your yard so that the kids can locate, find them, uh, open their door and find them and locate them. It's ten dollars per child and you need to register at the community center. The Parks and Recreation Department is also having an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April sixteenth at Prince Field, starting at ten AM. And wristbands are required. Um, and it would be for, uh, Miami Springs and BG residents. And it starts at two dollars per wristband. Also, One Blood will be at the community center on three twenty-one from twelve to seven PM. I wanna remind all the residents also to subscribe to the Miami Springs, uh, weekly newsletter that goes out every Friday. You have to text the word Miami Springs altogether, all capitals to the number two two eight two eight, and then you will be added to the weekly, uh, Springs newsletter. Also, we have, um, the Florida Department of Highway, uh, Safety and Motor Vehicles is offering the renewal and replacement of your driver's license again. We don't want that, um, program to go away, so we wanna keep up the enrollment on that. So, um, they're now taking appointments for the April sixth, um, times. So please call three oh five eight 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 fifty-two eighty-six, Monday through Friday from eight to four to schedule an, your appointment. Also, we're still donating, um, we're still collecting donations of new or gently worn shoes in honor of the National Shoe, the World Day. And this collection is gonna continue, um, at both our city hall facility and our community center. There's boxes of, at the entrances of both of the facilities until March thirty-first, and these will benefit the homeless of South Florida. That's it.
Thank you, Tammy. Council, uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to thank William and staff for, um, I know I had, um, added the short-term rentals on this meeting. I deferred it to the next, but it seems like so much productivity is being done and I'm, I'm excited to know that. I mean, I don't even know if I'm gonna bring it back, to be honest. I may have a couple of questions, but, but thank you for that. Thank you for looking into that. That's revenue for a city. That's exactly what we need, what we're looking for so that we can go ahead and hire more staff and, um, provide whatever it is that the city needs and, and tapping into those revenue resources that, that we're due. And so thank you for that. I really appreciate it. Um, uh, I think that that's it. I just wanted to thank our, our council and, um, that's about it. Thanks for, uh, a good productive meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Best?
Not, not, not really. I, 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 I think thi- this has been a long meeting, um. We got a couple of baseball games. The Springs High School is still, still going. So we got a couple of games, uh, this week, one, uh, tomorrow night and one Thursday night, fifteenth and seventeenth, uh, here on, here on Dove. Uh, I'll let you know when I see Omar in the morning. Uh, yeah, it'll, it'll be better. It'll be fine. But I, I told him when he was here earlier, I says, you know, hopefully I won't destroy any equipment this time. I mean, that wind picked a tent up and literally put it over a ten-foot fence and threw it out onto the middle of Dove. Yeah.
And you hang it on.
No, I, I, actually I wasn't there. I went home to, to, to get scorebooks and stuff and, and I came back and one of the guys from the high school says, your tent was across the street. I just brought it back. Did a pretty good job on that. The slats and the spars of it. Anyway, so that's, that's that. Um, I should probably mention the River Cities Festival and hats off to Julie Arias, the new uh, non-for-profit, um, director of the River Cities Festival. So the River Cities Festival went off like a, like, like a, like. director of the River Cities Festival. So, the River Cities Festival went off like, like, like a, like a top. I would say that the compressed fashion of the festival probably brought more people than a normal festival would have brought. Because Friday and Saturday night, it was literally, I did the stage announcements for all three days, and, and I can tell you, it was a sea of humanity out there, it was just, no, I really, it was, and I even made the statement on, you know, it, it just was, it was a sea of humanity, some great music, great vendors, great food. And I asked the cops every day when I left, I said, any, any act, any action, any act, nope, everything's quiet, all quiet on the Western Front. So, to, to my knowledge, there was no incidents at the River Cities Festival. That's amazing, none. And I, and I, and I put it off, I said it, I said it in the closing, when I closed the festival on Sunday night, I said, I said, this is testament to good policing. This is, this is, you know, top of the heap, in terms of how a police force engages people and prevents stuff before it even happens, and, and these guys were just off the charts. And I know there was officers there from Medley and, and Virginia Gardens, and, and as well as the Springs. So, it was a combined effort, and they did a great job. So, the river, the, the post thirty-two, we had a, we had a, a tent there, I'll, I'll let Victor speak to that. So, he's got at least something to say, he's last tonight, right? So, he'll speak to that, and.
Something for.
Yeah. Well, come on, man, you gotta share this stuff, I mean, yeah, Mayor, that's all I have, thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Vasquez.
Oh, I thought Walter was there.
Well, I'll let.
He signed off.
He signed off.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, well, just a couple of things on the, on the War Memorial, so we've shifted gears in terms of, once we heard that the appropriation was not gonna go through, but, but Jennifer Graham and I are meeting to discuss a more detailed plan. She's got some ideas for corporate sponsorship for this. The money that was made was mostly made on, on the, on the bricks. You know, fifty-dollar bricks, a hundred-dollar bricks, thank you, William, William bought a brick and, and a hundred-dollar brick. And, and so, we're gonna do more on that, so, we're gonna amplify this, and, and hopefully, you know, get it on the city's website and all that, to, you know, so people know about this. One of the most interesting things that happened, in my view, during that whole weekend, is that because we had that rendition of the new monument, of the way it's gonna look that Max Mylan had on, in, in the, in the super, you know, it, it gave people, you could tell, point to it and say, you know, this is what it's gonna look like. You're familiar with, this is what it's gonna look like, and this is where the bricks are gonna go. And I was there Friday night, I was there every day, but Friday night, I was there to closing, and we had a, we had a fishbowl, and people were dropping, you know, dollar, five dollars, and one lady gave us a hundred dollars. And, and I, she gave me the hundred dollars, and I said, well, you can buy a brick for a hundred dollars. She said, no, I just want to contribute a hundred dollars, lady works for Homeland Security.
Yep.
So, it was very, and, and, and a lot of conversations with people. I think that my takeaway from the River Cities is, almost everyone, I can say that for me too, almost everyone seemed like they, like they were taking a deep breath, like they've come out of a cave. You know, that you could walk around and, you know, get something to eat, and, and listen to the music. So, my congratulations, William, and, and everyone on, on the way it was organized. It was, you know, kind of a little different in the way it was broken down, but, so I think that, you know, we got some things going there. Factory Town, you know, no news or no sound is good news.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, we're gonna see what's gonna happen with this, I've been kind of, you know, keeping my ear out for this. I noticed this yesterday, when we get out of church, we also go to the cozy corner for lunch, and when we went to Mylan, and I came back around the circle, I noticed all the signage around the circle, right? Westward, you know, I, I don't know how long it's been there, but there's some new signage up that I thought was great, that, because you're coming around that circle, and unless you really know, you know, you, and, and it's clearly, you can see now signs pointing in these different directions, even towards Royal Point Sienna and, and some of the other streets, so I thought that was pretty terrific. Shannon and Sandra, what a great pair. You know, the, the, you know, the newsletter, the, you know, that's been coming out, the, the, I came to the, the other day, I attended the meeting of the Ecology Board. I've been trying to visit at least once to see, no one showed up but me, but that's okay. But Sandra did a great job, they had a nice discussion and stuff, but it was, you know, she, she's, she's picked up that mantle where Myra left it off, right, to every single one of the boards and commissions, you know, gathering, making sure that the, the minutes, you know, sent out and, and so forth, so. So, William, kudos to you guys for those two hires, and really impressed with those, with those young ladies. And lastly, was, you were mentioning the, the, the flu shots. I think it was today or yesterday, Executive President or Executive Vice President of Pfizer talked about the need for a, another booster. So, that may be coming down the pipe, my own doctor said there may be coming something down the pipe for particular groups of citizens, so. It's been a long meeting, thank you.
Okay, and you said Councilman Behet is, is?
He's, yes, he logged on.
Okay, so, I just wanted to mention to welcome a new business, we have a new business, it's like a sweet shop on Royal Point Sienna, is it North Royal? Three seventy-five, North Royal Point Sienna, fruity.
Don't know exactly, but I saw it.
Yeah, that's, so, we want to welcome them, we're thrilled that they're here, and I'm gonna go by and, and check them out, sounds delicious, the pictures that I saw. River Cities, I agree, I think, you know, everyone had a wonderful time, I heard some comments from some people that it wasn't, you know, as big as before, or, you know, my goodness. We, we have new organizers, and it's been two years, so it just, I thought it was just wonderful event. Thank you, Councilman Best, for emceeing everything from the beginning to the end, and.
Love doing it.
Structure.
It's, it's just a blast, it's just a blast.
And everyone loves.
The city, Mayor, the city so needed that.
Yes.
I think all you guys are right in saying that, yeah.
And I hope that the organizers just reach out before next event and kind of get input from residents and vendors as to the things that they thought worked really well, and the things that they think, you know, could be improved. But it's a work in art, so I want to thank them for that, for bringing that back to our city. Again, I wanted to thank Senator Manny Diaz and our Representative Brian Avila for the appropriations, my jaw dropped when I saw that we were getting the five million dollars for these really needed, I mean, these are really, really needed projects that, for flood control, for seniors, that we just do not have the funds to do, and to make our city more resilient. And very, very appreciative of their work in Tallahassee for us representing our communities. The other thing is the HOSA, they asked for a donation, so I'm not sure how, I guess, William, you can reach out to us later to figure out how much, or is that something we should discuss here?
How much?
Okay. That would come out of the City Council?
Right.
Funds? Okay, is there a suggestion as to? Five hundred? Okay, Councilman Best suggested five hundred, are we okay with that? Okay. Yes, and I think that helps.
True.
If you hold tell rooms, okay, I mean, anything, you know, I think always helping students and, and especially in our public schools, and to be engaged in things outside of, you know, just their studies, is a great.
To the chair, I think they said in their, that they, the town of Medley donated a thousand dollars to Miami Springs Senior High to support the students that will be attending. Do you think maybe we should match that? I don't know. I mean, they're smaller town than us, and.
Yes, but they, they have a lot.
Oh, they have, that's true, that's true.
Yeah, they, they, commercial city.
You're right, you're right.
So, very often, they.
Well, you know what, but you know what, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dissent, to, to, to factor seven fifty.
Okay, all right, is everyone okay with that? I'm good with whatever y'all decide on that, yeah.
Seven fifty.
Okay.
Nice number.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and, let's see, one last thing. The, what, I did have one last thing, with the Aquatic Center, the staff from the Aquatic Center, we had talked about possibly having like a luncheon or something for them, sponsoring, the council sponsoring a luncheon as to, a thank you for, you know, starting of the season, I think everyone's okay with that, okay, and that'll be from the City Council. And then, the last thing I want to, I keep saying the last thing, this really is the last thing, I promise. Is.
And you went last.
Is that Councilman Best has offered a seminar at Blessed Trinity for six weeks, it was a six-week session, and I attended every single one, except when we were in Tallahassee. It was once a week, just fascinating, the history of the Church, of the Catholic Church, but from a standpoint of just learning history itself, going all the way back to the time of, of when the Church was first created. And my understanding is that it's going, it's videotaped, and it's gonna be available as sessions, so Councilman, I'd like to, because even if you're not Catholic, I want to encourage you to, the history that you learn from these sessions is just fascinating.
Yeah, it, 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 it is taught from the vantage of how the Church affected history and how history affected the Church. So, it's not really religious geared toward a religious type of thing. Some people that were there weren't even Catholic, so, yeah, and the pastor, Father Matthias, is gonna allow us, we did film all of it, except for, we want to redo the first, the first session, which we will. And then, we're gonna put it on the YouTube and put it on the website at Blessed Trinity, so that anybody can watch it whenever they want, rather than have to attend, you know, in person. That's the reason I didn't go to Tallahassee, because I think it was week two or three of the sessions on a Wednesday night. And so, I had already committed to that, so obviously, I couldn't go up to Tallahassee, but thank you for bringing that up, Mayor, I appreciate it.
I just want to encourage everyone and, and the residents too, because I learned so much about history and, you know, politics, because really, you know, the Church and politics go hand in hand, you know, back then. So, I just want to encourage anyone who has the time to do it, to listen to the sessions.
I'll let you know when it's, when it's up, and we can announce it at City Hall.
Okay, and I think that's.
Ten one, but I gave the professor, you know, great.
Yeah, great.
I enjoyed it, I enjoyed it.
All right, means adjourned, have a good evening, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Okay. Be back on by Monday.
Yeah, that's my first.
Yeah. I hope so. All right, guys.
No, no, that's fine. I put my phone.